The meeting of Liverpool City Council for the 20th of February 2024 officially open. I'd like to welcome everyone here who has joined us here today. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with the council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I'd like to invite Pastor Shane Bywater from the Fellowship Baptist Church to read the prayer and affirmation of council, which will then be followed by the national anthem. Could I please invite Pastor Shane to the lecture? And could I invite everyone to please stand?
Thank you for the invite. First, I'd like to do the acknowledgement of country before we begin our proceedings. We would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the coverable clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Darawal and Darug nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. I'd now like to just open in a word of prayer. We do thank you, heavenly Father. You are the all-powerful, all-knowing, everywhere-present God. We thank you for our wonderful country, where we are free to live and freely speak and worship and learn and work as we choose. We acknowledge, Lord, that you hold all things in your hands. Our thoughts are not your thoughts, our ways are not your ways. But we do thank you for the blessing that you give us. We thank you for this great city of Liverpool, with a rich history and a rich potential into the future. We pray that you'll bless our community of many different cultures and backgrounds and religions, Lord, all having the one desire to live peaceful, productive and purposeful lives. We are blessed to live here in Liverpool. We thank you for the leaders of our city, the Liverpool council, the executives and the CEO and even right through, Lord, town planners and finance and the people who mow lawns and gardens, everyone who works in this great city, Lord, both paid and voluntary. We thank you for them. We also pray and thank you for our councillors, who give their time and energy and creativity to this community. And we pray, Father, as we close, that you will bless this time today. May you encourage a time of healthy, respectful debate, courageous decision-making in the spirit of innovation and positive outcomes for the citizens and people of Liverpool. And lastly, I thank you for Christ Jesus, who came into this world, who died and rose again, that we might have freedom and eternal life in Christ Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Pastor Shane, for your kind words and prayers. And please send our regards to your congregation and also provide them our well wishes as well. We have councillor Carnib online, attending remotely. Councillor Carnib, can you hear us?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Can I move that councillor Carnib be granted permission to attend the meeting via MS Teams? Seconded Deputy Mayor, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We have no apologies and we have no condolences. The next item is the confirmation of the minutes of our previous meeting held on the 7th of February 2024. Can move councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, against, I declare that unanimous. Are there any declarations of interest?
Just a question, Mr Mayor. In regard of Conf-04 Legal Affairs Report, on the list, case number 54, the Australian Islamic House. This case discontinued a few months ago. Should I still declare interest? If it's finished a long time ago?
Look, thank you, councillor. The matter is completed. It's only in the papers to note that it's completed. It's my view that you do not need to declare an interest and you do not need to leave the chamber.
Thank you very much. Are there any other? Yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Plan 04, non-procurnary interest. I had previously provided advice before my appointment as CEO. I will leave the chamber.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations? I have a declaration on Conf-04 Legal Affairs Report, item 42. I work with that firm and I have a non-procurnary, less significant interest, but I will be leaving the chambers when it gets to it. If there's no further declarations, we'll now move into the public forum of today's proceedings. Move seconded councillor Goodman. Yeah, we'll get to that next. That's all right. Yeah, go for it. Speak towards your motion for your motion, councillor.
We need to turn off the main speakers, like that. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. As Ms Kaufman so eloquently outlined the circumstances behind the notice of motion, it is really important that we give our community a place to honour the legacy of Alina and Anesto. Because in these circumstances, it's so easy for the person who perpetrated the crime, for the person who inflicted so much damage to be remembered and to be prioritized in this situation. But I think our community would want us to highlight the good, law-abiding people who we have lost from this community, who, you know, we won't get to see, be nurses at Liverpool Hospital, who we won't get to see, you know, contribute to our broader community because their life was cut short, as in the case of Alina and Anesto. And one of the things that really broke my heart when I first spoke with Ms Kaufman was amidst her grief, she was thinking about the other children in our community who go hungry, who need support in terms of planting a fruit tree, so that any young child within that community can go pluck a fruit from the tree and in doing so, not only get, you know, get what they need, but also remember the legacy and honour the legacy of Anesto and Alina. And it is for that reason that I think it's incredibly important that we make sure that we honour that legacy and we communicate to other young people in our community that making the decision to, you know, to do antisocial things, if I can put it that way, not only tears apart those that are impacted by your decisions, but also has a broader ripple effect beyond just those who you harm or kill. So I think it's really important for a number of reasons that we make sure that we honour the legacy of Alina and Anesto. To that end, I think there was some initial wording that Ms Kaufman and I had discussed in terms of the plaque, but I think it's only right that council consult with not just her family, but also the friends of Alina and Anesto in terms of the exact wording of the plaque. So I'm not going to include that as a part of the substantive motion. But I will, I'll leave it there and I would encourage my fellow councillors to unanimously support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Caliander. Councillor Moon?
I would like to add to the motion, if I can, Mr Mayor. I'd like to add that we write to the state government requesting the changes of laws that Ms Alazza has added. Because these changes will actually, or lobbying for these changes from the local member would actually help a lot. Because what's happened in this case is very... I can't put words to it, to be honest with you. I'm too emotional about it because this family has lost two siblings, two children. That would have been their lifelong investment. That would have been the time that we're looking at them, raising them to be something different within the community, something they desired, something they can bring to the table. And now they don't have that. So if I could please add that we write to the state government the changes that, yes. Yep. And also...
Can you just give him a moment so he can finish? What are you... Are you finished, councillor Moon?
No, not yet. Yep. State government requests changes in laws to reflect... I'm just trying to word it in my head. It's not working. Write to the state government. Yeah, go ahead.
Look, as Ms Kaufman said in her speech, there is currently a petition with over 20,000 signatures to campaign for changing the law. I will be sponsoring the petition in Parliament as the local member. So perhaps rather than to request the changes, write to the state government to support Ms Kaufman's petition in terms of demanding consistency in sentences to serious road crimes.
Are you happy with that, councillor Moon?
Yeah, thank you.
So just serious road crime for the... For the purposes of the... That's what the petition is about.
I haven't sent the petition, so I'm just trying to...
We could, if councillors wanted to, we could add a point four. That would say that, you know, council uses own social media to promote the petition. How is it? The 10,000? Okay. Okay, right. I think there's no need for the point four then.
Can I ask if there's capacity in this motion to capture also what Ms Kaufman was talking about? About a review of the minimum and maximum sentences for these type of crimes?
Yeah, you can delete number four, please. Delete number four. Come on, thank you.
Maybe instead of using council social media to promote the petition, I think it would be nice for council social media to raise awareness about the life and the legacy of both Alina Kaufman and Anesto Salazza. Given they had dreams, they had, you know, incredible things that they were on their way to achieving. It's only right that we, you know, highlight this within our broader community.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, CEO is just advising that we can do that. That's fine. Councillor Hadid?
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I feel very, very sorry for the loss of men and women and kids. Look, but to be honest with you, why don't we have one memorial to cover the loss of all our men and women and the kids from the past to today? Because it seems to me the issue will drag on and on and on. Every month you will receive a different request from different community, from different people, different individuals.
Sorry, councillor Hadid?
So one memorial, let me finish, please. Thank you.
I'm saying we have, there's an item coming up next about that.
Beg pardon?
There's the next item that we're talking about. There's another notice of motion as by councillor Rhodes. So I think it might be saved best for that. All right, well, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, and declare carried. Unanimous? Unanimous. Okay. Councillor Rhodes, you indicated that you had an urgency motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, the community is seeking an emergency motion about the Mount Omai that we heard so much about at the beginning of this meeting. It's an interesting point, Mr Mayor. The urgency is because National Parks and Wildlife Service did their own historical evaluation of the property and it was found that it recognized historical, social and cultural heritage significance. And that was detailed in a motion put to council that we haven't received an answer from.
So what's the urgency there?
The urgency is that there is a need for an interim order on this because the National Parks and Wildlife have never responded to council from a motion put to council by councillor Hagerty and seconded by myself in December 2022.
No, I'm happy to accept that as an urgency motion. So what is your motion as such, councillor?
Well, the motion, let me first say, what was the motion prior to the one that we're putting up tonight? It was unanimous, they passed.
Sorry, before you continue, can you call for a second, please?
Oh, can we have a second, though?
I don't have a motion for it to be seconded yet. So we're trying to get to what is the motion?
Well, the motion will be that notes the heritage significance of Mount Omai as outlined in a heritage assessment commissioned by National Parks Wildlife Service in 2016. And this should be coming up onto the screen. And two, write to National Parks Wildlife Service as soon as practicable to reiterate the local heritage significance of Mount Omai. And B, seek clarification on its intentions for the building within Mount Omai. That's the motion.
Wonderful. Do we have a seconder? Deputy Mayor? Seconded by the deputy mayor. Did you want to speak for it or can we just...
I will speak for it, Mr Mayor, because it is not...
That was the preamble to the speaking for it.
Sorry?
I was just saying, no, the councillors are very looking forward to hearing the rest of you are speaking for it.
As we heard from the members in the gallery, this is an item that is, unless we do put the interim heritage item, it's not being... What's the word? Respectful to council's request for the information. I put, was given to them in December 2023. We've never heard about what their intentions are for this piece of land that they themselves noted was of heritage significance for the Liverpool LGA. Really, it's a no-brainer. Mount Omai was sold, as you heard. And in that sale, we believe that there was information in the condition that it would remain an art precinct of local heritage significance. Omai House has been the home to Alice Kaplan's son until New South Wales National Parks, National Parks, New South Wales recently won the court case to evict him. The community is concerned that the council has not received any response clarifying their intentions, nor have they addressed the heritage significance of the site as identified in their own heritage assessment report. So together with the eviction of the tenant, that may indicate that National Parks Wildlife Service may have intentions to demolish the building's significance or to sell it or to dispose of the property in some way. Therefore, it is the community that is seeking council to issue an interim heritage order on the site until National Parks Wildlife Service has responded to the request, which was way back in December 2023. It's a reasonable request.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Can I just ask for some clarity, just so that we have the motion correct? I think that number two B is a bit confusing because we wouldn't have had a motion on the 12th of January 2023. So either it's a correspondence on that date or a motion sometime before that, just for accuracy.
I can clarify that and I'm sorry, that was a fault in the original document. It was December, as I said, 2022. So we could just amend the 12th of January and put December 2022. Take out the 12th because we haven't had that confirmed. But it was at the December meeting. Yeah.
Okay, great. I'd like councillor Goodman? Sorry, can you put your microphone? There we go. Should be on now, yep.
So when did council write to National Parks? Was it December 23 or December 22?
A meeting?
23 or 24?
What?
If it's January, is it 23 or 24? Is it December 23 or 22? Okay. And has council done enough day-to-day on this actual site to list it heritage?
Sorry, councillors, can I ask that you go through the chair, please? And there's somebody...
I, within the heritage document, that New South Wales Services, well, Parks Services, identified it as being of significance of heritage to Liverpool. So it's just that it's been identified in their own document. We want to know what they're going to do about it. Are they going to ignore it? This is the information that we don't know and we are seeking. Sorry, what?
I think I can refer that to the CEO. Because the question is what work has council done with regards to due diligence on the... I guess on the, your specific question, councillor Goodman, with regards to the heritage value of the site?
Thank you. I'll ask the director responsible for heritage, director of planning and compliance.
Go for it. You can go for it now.
Through the CEO. The work that has currently been done encompasses a preliminary assessment of the site and staff are in recognition that the site holds some heritage values. So we're now undertaking a process where we will brief the CEO on potentially processing a interim heritage order consideration for the council. At the same time, we have on a few occasions reached out to the relevant authority. The name slips me. And we will do so again formally now to MP WS.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to clarify, would there be an interim order placed on the property whilst council performs those tasks?
Is it heritage until proven not? Or is it not heritage until proven heritage?
I'll refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Before I send it to the director, what's being considered is that you agree to an immediate, urgent interim heritage order to allow further work to be undertaken. But I'll ask the director to confirm the further steps.
Through the CEO, council staff, as a matter of priority, will brief the CEO on the validity of an interim heritage order on this item. And once that is decided, we'll bring it to the council for a resolution and proceed with the process. Until such time, there is no order placed on the property, nor is it formally recognized as heritage.
Councillor Caliander?
So in terms of identifying heritage sites and places of significance around Liverpool, I know there was a study or there was a list of sites that came to council in the last sort of 12 to 18 months. Was this included as one of those sites? And if not, why not?
Again, I'll ask the director to respond to that.
Through the CEO, I'll take that on notice to provide you with more information about whether this specific site has so far been considered as part of that study.
Wonderful. Councillor Goodman?
Are we able to defer it until we get further information? I don't think we've got enough information about it to be able to vote on it if it's been taken on notice.
The... The... Let's see. You can move to defer it if you want to. I'm just thinking of the technicality of moving a deferral motion on an urgency motion. I'll assume that you can do that for one of the code of meeting practice. Do you have a seconder for your...
We want to vote. So the vote, the motion stands.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get there. So do you have a seconder for your deferral motion? Yeah, I just need a seconder to have it on the books.
Yes, Cali Carnib.
Okay, councillor Carnib seconds it. Thank you, councillor Carnib. Thank you, everyone. So we have a four-shot motion that the item be deferred, but we won't deal with that now. Great. Are there any of the speakers for or against the motion as the urgency motion?
Speaking for the motion.
For the motion as the urgency motion. Anybody want to speak? I'm happy, look, I'm happy to speak for the urgency motion. That is a significant heritage precinct up there. And I think, I must say, I feel quite foolish having driven, lived on Ne Cox Lane and driven there numerous times, my mother living there, and not knowing the difference between Mount Omai and Glenfield Farm. So I look forward to having a bit of a closer look next time. So, yeah, I think that there is merit in preserving that as part of that precinct. So I urge councillors to support the motion. Any... We're first voting for the motion, councillors. Is any of the speakers for or against? If not, I'll give councillor Rhodes her right of reply. No? We vote for the motion as moved by councillor Rhodes initially first. Councillor Rhodes, right of reply?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. It is not a difficult thing for us to do. The word is immediate interim heritage order that we can do today. That at least saves the property until all the information can be brought forward and then you decide whether you're going to put a heritage item, put this, register this as a heritage item. It is not a difficult thing. You are doing what is right until the National Parks has actually responded to council's request. 12 months and no response is not acceptable. And if council thinks that it is, we're going to have a huge lot of trouble as we move forward. We've got to be, we've resolved it. It was unanimous. We have, we've got to protect what council has already suggested. And that's why we need the interim order immediately. And I urge all councillors to vote for this motion. When the information comes back, you may decide you don't want a heritage order on this site. But at this particular stage, we need an immediate interim heritage order. So I urge all councillors to vote for it.
Thank you. I just have a very quick question. Can you please confirm once again the ownership of...
National Parks and Wildlife.
So it's not under private ownership?
Yes.
It's owned by a government entity? By a government entity? By the New South Wales state government, effectively? By the New South Wales State Government, effectively? Yeah, it's not private ownership. Sorry. Can you put your microphone? Do you want to put it?
How can we impose, okay, some things on land? It is not ours.
I think that's what, I think that's what many speakers were referring to earlier today. So, yes. All right, there's been speakers for and against. I now will put the motion as moved by Council Rhodes, the urgency motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. We'll now move on to mayoral minutes, of which there are two.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a question. So does that mean anyone that comes and speaks in council and wants to put an interim order on their neighbour's house because they think it might be heritage? Can that go through until it's proven not heritage? Regardless, but regardless, it's only someone.
Yeah, so it was as moved by council, council Rhodes, every council's entitled to bring up a, a motion of a, of such matter. Can I just have the mayoral minute brought up, please? I don't.
Just for the previous motion, can we, can we include the breakdown of votes?
You can do that by calling for a division.
All right, can I call for a division then? When Council McNaul gets back?
Oh, hold on, let's hold on, let's see. I don't, look, you know what? I, you, you, we haven't technically started, but you know, I don't see why, what's the big deal? You know what I mean? People have their votes recorded and I can't start a, I can't start a division anymore. What happened? I can't, can I, can we start a division, please? It's ended, see? We'll press her button, she voted, Council Harle, there we go. So all those in phase, no, not nom zero two, that's what you're calling it. All those in favour of the urgency motion, you can vote yes, and those against, no. Yes.
Vote yes or no, and someone needs to vote for.
Can you, Council Harle, can you press, Council Harle? Can you press it for the deputy mayor, please? She voted in favour. There you go.
You should tell her that she voted yes.
You did vote in favour, didn't you, Deputy Mayor? It's Council Karib, where's Council Karib?
Yes.
You're voting for or against?
For.
Voting for, okay, that's a nice one. All right, thank you, everyone. Done. Okay, we'll go back to the mayoral minutes. If I can get that up on the screen, please? Or I think I do have. This is regarding 15th Avenue and Cow Pasture Road. 15th Avenue is a spine road that connects Liverpool CBD to the new Badgers Creek Airport. The majority of the road runs through Ostral, which is Liverpool's fastest growing suburb and absorbs population growth with an expected extra 30,000 homes to be built. At peak hours, the traffic backs over three kilometres. It is also only one of, it is also one of only two roads that lead out of Middleton Grange, which results in extreme traffic delays for Middleton Grange residents every day. It takes residents 40 minutes to travel 300 metres. Coupled with the rapidly increasing growth of the Camden and Campbelltown LGAs, traffic flows from three directions, flows from three directions into a standstill at Cow Pasture Road, which also requires a significant upgrade to allow for the traffic flow for now and for the future. Cow Pasture Road as a minimum needs to be upgraded from 15th Avenue to the M7. The federal government sets the immigration policies, the state government sets the housing policies, and council is left to clean up the mess. We have a signed agreement with the federal and state government that they will fund 15th Avenue and have it built when the airport is open as part of the city deal, which appears to have been forgotten. This commitment was a condition of council support for the airport as our residents do not deserve to live in a traffic jam caused by the airport. We acknowledge that 50 million has been provided for 15th Avenue. However, that makes up 10% of the costs required for the 15th Avenue works. Council needs to make it a priority to advocate for the residents of Liverpool who will ultimately benefit from the proposed upgrade. And I would like to move that council conducts a campaign and continues to lobby the New South Wales Government for upgrading of 15th Avenue and Cow Pasture Road, conducts a petition of the residents with respect to the need for the upgrade, three, directs the CEO to appoint a person to oversee the campaign lobbying, advocacy and petitioning council, and four, allocates $100,000 from the general funds for this purpose. I don't need a second, but I'm happy for those, everyone who wants to speak for, Council Moon?
That's great, I think this is a well mentioned or designed motion because this is what the area needs as we grow and the airport's open. At the moment, I travel along that road a few times a week at least, and the amount of traffic that's there is really daunting. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Green?
I'll acknowledge that the problem with, with 15th Avenue, I'd certainly share the frustration with residents and council of the fact that we are spoken about and accepted as the third city. And clearly, in all the plans that I've read, it seems that it has been very much forgotten. I have no problem with the campaign. I have no problem with the petition. I do have problems with points three and four because in terms of advocacy, direct advocacy, it really needs to come from the CEO and the mayor. As in my opinion, as, as a advocate myself in securing a major change in government policy where I was told that I would never achieve it. But that's where the, in terms of the authority and the power of, of the council sits with both the CEO and with the mayor. So I can't see any problem with both the mayor and the CEO in doing that. We've got a very large, as I understand it, I'm told, comms team that is bigger than most other councils. So that should be part of the comms team to do the social media and whatever else needs to happen. So I would see that the 100,000, I could not support that because I believe that the lobbying really needs to be from the CEO and the mayor. That you're the people that should be, that need to be, I'll change it, need to be banging on the doors of state and federal to say, you know, Liverpool is being overlooked and ignored in the basic. That, you know, but the connection to the airport is basic. And should, where the situation is now is absolutely unacceptable. I absolutely agree. But I also believe that it is strong advocacy from the mayor and the CEO that can break, that could make the breakthrough.
Thank you, Council Green. So you're speaking against the motion?
Well, I, well, I agree with part of it. I would, can, I, I can't, I can't support it as it is. If, in expressing my view, if you were prepared to, to take out, like the, in directing the CEO and the mayor to directly campaign or to directly advocate with state and federal key ministers and stakeholders and delete number four.
Yep, well, look, I can respond to that. We do, the CEO and I do that on a daily basis on the numerous things that we are advocating for with federal government and with state government. And I just think that now it's time to really up the ante because whilst people are sitting there, you know, in Middleton Grange, stuck in traffic, you know, they need more than just, you know, us trying to get appointments and writing letters. There's got to be a significant push to be able to get attention onto this. All we hear from the government today is how we need more population growth, we need more housing. And we put up our hands and we work constructively to actually do our fair share. We do our fair share to bring, to allow people to, to create their homes and families here. At the same time, it's not fair for those residents to not get the funding that they require for the upgrade of the roads. You know, you're getting billions of dollars being invested on a metro line in the west, in Parramatta. They already have great train services and we're being left behind.
Exactly, I totally agree with you.
Yep. Sorry, councillor, I, I haven't finished it, please. So this is about saying that we are now taking this to the next level and hopefully can start delivering some significant outcomes. But I'm sorry, just the deputy mayor had her hand up.
All right, I'm Green, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for putting this forward. Can I suggest that perhaps this is not the only petition that we would or, or should or could have for the advocacy? And so if there's a question around this, this role being busy enough, we certainly could find other state government advocacy around projects in our area that we could add to the description, you know, at a later date, that wouldn't, that would be, to me.
On that note, Deputy Mayor, I do note that there are two other petitions as put forward by councillor Moon that we lobby to get the Housing Commission homes upgraded within the area and also that we get the fast train services to Liverpool. I have not seen any petitions, I have not seen any material about that. That was resolved by council. I haven't heard anything about it. So I agree with you, Deputy Mayor, happy to have that as part of it. Maybe add with point five that we use, we use these, the items from point three and point four to also lobby for the upgrade of the Housing Commission homes in the Liverpool LGA as well as the fast train services from Liverpool as previously moved, as previously adopted by this council. Does that cover your points, Deputy Mayor? And Council Hadid also did move those motions many years ago as well and was very successful in getting the metro pushed out here. Oh, sorry, I'll get to it one moment, Council Hadid, Council Moon, then I'll go over to you.
There's an actual element that we've got in the room. We've got a state member that's sitting with us that can actually lobby for this as well. Now, we'd like to see some action taken on the state from you.
As you can see, there, that's, that's currently taking place. But I would also like to go on the speaking list. I don't think this is the right appropriate, this is the forum to debate.
I'm just, I'm just requesting that the, that there's a state member sitting with us and your help would be greatly appreciated in this matter. That's all I'm stating, so if that's okay with you.
Which is why I was, I've put my speaker on to speak.
I wasn't aware that you had your speaker on.
Are you finished, Council Moon? Yep, thank you. Uh, Council Hadid and then Council Caliander. Council Rhodes, can you turn your microphone off, please?
Okay, oh, just a question, Mr. Mayor. What happened to the 50 million dollars allocated by the state government for the upgrading of 15th Avenue?
So from my understanding, that money is being used for design works. I'll refer to the CEO.
Yeah, look, thank you, I'll start and then I can hand over to the Director of Planning and also Director of Operations. That 15 million is currently being used for all of, 50, sorry, 50 million is currently being used in relation to all of the pre-work that's required. We're talking about the designs, et cetera, that's happening. I think Director of, either Director of Operations or Director of Planning in relation to?
Through the CEO, just reiterating what you covered, the 50 million has been confirmed by Transport for New South Wales to be used for the business case and the design work.
Now, what you're trying to do, Mr. Mayor, is just to put a bit of pressure to give the project a priority. Okay, well, this is fine, thank you.
Sorry, Council Caliander was going to go next.
I just want to raise, just on, on the back of councillor Moon's comment, we attended, you, I, I think Mr. Mallard was there as well and councillor Rhodes. We're at a luncheon where the, the Transport Minister spoke and one of the first things she said, one of the first things she said was how lucky that Liverpool was that we have, you have two, two members of parliament that advocate strongly for your area. Okay? So in terms of the advocacy, yeah, well, well, yeah, but.
So, Council, Council Green, can I ask, what's the relevance of your, relevance of your comment? Can you put your microphone on, please?
Well, because some comments are made that are left to hang out there as if they are fact. Now, the fact of the matter is councillor Moon asked, well, why isn't the member for Liverpool out there doing anything?
Council Green, all he said was that he hopes that with the state member sitting with us that she can help join in our advocacy.
That's it.
That's all he said, I don't think there was anything more than that.
Trying to be smart, I was just asking.
Well, I'm just trying, well, I would just put on the record.
Sorry, sorry, councillors, one sec, there's been a point of order. Council Rhodes?
Point of order, can we have some control? If I can't get on to speak, you've got other people speaking without being given authority to do so.
Council Green was raising, raising a procedural thing, which doesn't turn out to be procedural. Yes, thank you. Thank you, it's, it's upheld, can I ask the council to please maintain decorum? Council Caliander, you were next to call, then councillor Caliander, did you want to say something, Council Caliander? And then councillor Rhodes?
Thank you.
Everyone, turn off your, turn off your microphones, please.
Great, thank you very much. Look, I share councillor Green's concerns. I, I absolutely agree with you that the need for infrastructure for our fast growing community, particularly in areas like Ostral and Leppington are necessary. And there should be advocacy, there should be lobbying and there should be, you know, work directed towards both state and federal levels of government to get the funding and the, the, the infrastructure required for upgrades. However, we, as councillor Green mentioned, we do have one of the largest comms teams of, of many councils.
Sorry, Council Caliander, on what do you base that on?
I'm just repeating what councillor Green said.
Yeah, but, okay, so what, on what basis do you say that we are one of the largest comms teams in the area on?
Do we not?
Huh?
Do we not?
I didn't make that statement.
What's the benchmark?
You've made that statement.
Well.
I'm asking, I'm asking you to quantify, I'm asking you to quantify the statement, you've made it. So on what basis?
Either way, we have a comms and media team, right? Either way, we have a comms and media team. So I am quite concerned about the allocation of a, a new person or, you know, recruitment of a new person to oversee not just this campaign, but a number of other campaigns and allocating $100,000, which is a significant amount of ratepayers' money for this purpose when we are just over six months out from a local government election. I'm going to, you know, put, put that out there, I'm going to name the elephant in the room. We are just over six months out from a local government election. Anyone who is viewing this from an external perspective, and, you know, please, please wait before you jump down my throat on this. Anyone who is viewing this from an external position.
Yes, Councilman, what's your point of order?
That's already happened.
Sorry, what's your point, what's your point of order, councillor? Sorry, Council Caliander? You're implying that this is being used for political purposes? So, no, no, you're, you're saying straight out, you called it the elephant in the room. This council has business to conduct, right? Our residents are stuck in traffic in Middleton Grange. They're stuck in traffic on 15th Avenue, right? We do not have a design yet for 15th Avenue. People are building their homes and guess what? There's a good chance they may have to be, may have to be acquired, brand new homes. So we cannot stop our business. So I can ask, can I ask you please to retract your statements? Whether you want to speak for the motion, if you want, you don't want to allocate funding, that's purely entirely up to you. Ultimately, the CEO does not have time to go out here and go and knock on people's doors and get petitions sorted, right? If you want to do something about it, and I actually would now on this basis then question whether you actually have a conflict of interest in the matter considering you're part of the government. Because it seems that you don't want us to lobby your government. Earlier, you were happy for us to join with you in lobbying, but now you don't want us to lobby?
Can, can you reflect back on the first thing that I started my statement with? Which is, I absolutely see the need for advocacy. I absolutely appreciate the issues that residents in this part of our community face. Therefore, I, I actually agree with parts one and two of this motion, like councillor Green. However, my concern is with the recruitment of an additional person and the allocation of such a significant amount of money, of ratepayers' money, so close to a council election where it could be. so close to a council election where it could be construed as political, right? I'm actually putting that out there. I'm not making aspersions, I'm putting that out there because this is a view that people could take. Therefore, I would like to move a foreshadowed motion to keep one and two as is.
Yeah, sorry, that's an amendment, councillor. Oh, let's see what it is.
Or amend the motion, whatever.
Well, let's go, let me hear it first.
So keep one and two as is? Direct the CEO and mayor to oversee, I can't read what point three was previously. Can we just scroll up a little bit? Yep, can I continue? Great. Directs the CEO and mayor to, and then the rest of that sentence, and bring back a report to council on the potential cost of such a campaign.
Great. Sorry, councillor Caliander, I just remembered that mayoral minutes can't be amended. So if you want to, nor can they have a foreshadowed motion. So if you'd like to, you can move another motion at a later time. But under the code of meeting practice, mayoral minutes can't be amended. So that's fine. Councillor Hadeed? Oh, sorry, councillor Rhodes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Look, I love the idea that we've got to start advocating. Liverpool has been poorly treated. We were at the conference the other day where we had the Minister for Transport speaking to us. And if anybody in this room thinks that it is appropriate that any sort of transportation infrastructure is not going to be looked at until 2056, we've got to have rocks in our head. So if we're going to advocate, we should be advocating for far more than what we have got here. 2056, Mr. Mayor? These roads you've pointed out yourself, they were born, they were built in the 1950s. You know, they weren't built to cater with the traffic, they're not coping now. We've got to advocate and it isn't just, I know we've got a huge problem at 15th Avenue and Calpastor Road, but what about the Hume Highway? What about Hoxton Park Road? What about Heathcote Road and all of the other roads that lead into Liverpool? They're not coping. How are we going to live until 2056? So I find this far too narrow. I don't know how you're going to adjust it. But we've got to stand up for Liverpool. 2056, before we have any transportation infrastructure in Liverpool, is not, is just totally unacceptable. We need the Leppington Line. That Leppington Line should be a part of this motion. You know, we're sort of cherry picking. We're cherry picking out of so many things that we need to address in Liverpool. So can we amend this motion?
Well, I think councillor Rhodes, you know, you, I respect what you have to say and I do agree with it. The challenge that we have is if we don't run a strong and clear concise campaign, then we get nowhere. You know, if we're going to be asking, if you said what are the priorities? To me, the priority is what we can achieve. We can achieve a fast train to Liverpool in the very short term when the metro opens up. We can achieve 15th Avenue, then after that becomes the next massive priority because there are 30,000 homes being built, right? Its traffic is there, having lived in Middleton Grange, is beyond, is beyond anything I've ever seen before. Heathcote Road is at least getting an upgrade. You know, Hume Highway does have its own issues as a national road, but I just think if we try to dilute it, we're not going to be effective. As was pointed out by the deputy mayor, point five, we did resolve to run two campaigns on upgrading the Housing Commission Homes and fast trains, but nothing has been done about them. So we need to do something at least. I don't want to run 10 campaigns. I know we have a limited amount of time, so, unlimited amount of resource, because they don't just happen like that. I'm happy if you want to discuss that at a different time, but I think we just need to focus at this point. Councillor Hadeed?
Yeah, well, look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, Mr. Mayor, I have to agree with you, what you had to say in the past in regard of our state members. We are lucky to have them still lobbying on behalf of Liverpool Council. And well, I agree with my colleague Betty as well. But look, I'm very proud of you guys. Councillor Caliander, Tina Ayad, Nathan, all of you. And thank you for lobbying on behalf of Liverpool City Council. But look, having said that, from my own experience for the last 35 years involving politics, and I believe a CEO would agree with me, well, being, he was the president of New South Wales Parliament and he held too many ministerial positions. Sometimes the government doesn't listen to the MPs, to the members. It doesn't matter like a liberal or whoever, they don't listen to them. So unless we put more pressure on the government, you won't achieve any things, to be honest with you. Therefore, I agree with the mayor, you know what I mean? To have an extra step just to make sure, you know, getting some things done if they listen to him. If they listen. Because as I said to you, Mr. La Jaca, he was a minister, he knows that. Sometimes if he's not on the back page on ministerial level, they won't listen to him. They won't. They have an agenda, they have a program, they go for it. So this is why we have to put more pressure to get things done. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to add a point six onto this and to put this into perspective as well. Noting councillor Caliander's point about the amount of money required for this, that the state government is spending $300 million to upgrade Penrith Stadium, which will only add 2,500 extra seats. And notes that that money could be best used to upgrade 15th Avenue and Calpastor Road. Cool. Councillor Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and in so speaking, I've already spoken in favour of the motion, but if you can indulge me one comment, I'm just, you know, we've had a moment where we spoke about, you know, statements that are put out there that hang in the room. It's going to be a very long seven months if every time we try to advocate and move our community forward that we're accused of electioneering or politicising or things like that. So I want it made very clear in the room that I will continue for the next seven months to advocate as strongly as I always have for my community. And I would hate to think that those intentions are unintentionally or intentionally misconstrued in this place because it's not fair on any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other speakers, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, the declarator carried, I'm happy to call for a division, please. Yes, I don't have control of it, so I'll leave to the staff. All right, all those in favour? Councillor Kurnib?
Yes.
Yes, voting yes? Wonderful. Wonderful. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Declare the motion carried. One more mayoral minute. One more mayoral minute. All right, thank you. I'd like to move, this is a motion in response to a deficiency that's been noticed. The council doesn't actually have a policy that covers when footpaths need to be upgraded as part of conditions of consent. So I would like to move. Sorry, thank you, that's, sorry, thinking. So point one is that council creates a policy that states, thank you councillor, can I have some order, please? You're distracting the other councillors. That one, that council creates a policy that states that footpaths in this city centre are reconstructed as per council streetscape, paving and domain masterplan policy only when the subject site is being demolished and built. Two, development applications for change of use or fritters are not subject to the imposition of repaving and footpath works, noting the significant cost of such a condition has. Three, have the policy brought back to the March 2024 council meeting. I'm happy to speak for, but I think it's self-explanatory. And we'll have, when the policy comes back, we'll have plenty of time to discuss it then. All right.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
So you're advocating that we're not going to be charging people in, unless they're pulling down a building or putting up a new building or the footpath. The thing that I don't understand, if we do do that, we're going to have a patchwork of footpaths that are brand-new going straight into a concrete, lousy-looking thing or other ones. There's got to be a better way of addressing this and it's got to be addressed in totality so that you've got all your footpaths done at the one time, so that you've got all the footpaths looking the same, not the patchwork of new ones and old ones. And this one, that motion doesn't cover that issue. So I've got difficult, I've got a problem with it.
So councillor, I can speak to that. So when you walk out of 33 Moore Street, 33 Moore Street has one type of paving. Once you get to the neighbour's property, it has a different type of paving. Whenever you walk up and down the streets of Liverpool, you see that issue. So it's a constant patchwork. The only way to do what you're advocating, which is very, which I agree with you 100%, but the only way that's possible is if all the money is either saved up and it's done in one hit and you recoup it back from the landowners at some point in time. Because ultimately, in this scenario, if you impose onto the Mendenham community to do their works, you will have a patchwork because only there, only there area will be done. And subsequently, you'd have to wait until the person next door does something or council comes through and does the whole street in one hit.
So I was still talking.
Yeah, councillors can speak about it, I can't take away their right. Councillor Hadeed?
It's a policy.
Yep, thank you. Noted, councillor Hadeed. Did you want to leave that discussion till the next meeting when we bring the policy back?
Well, I want a point four, if you will consider it, that council consider having a special funding arrangement where a percentage of each development or DA that is received. That what?
Go on, that's all right, that's all right. Go on, that's all right.
Have a policy brought, include within the policy that you're considering the opportunity to have special funding arrangements where a percentage of each development of DA that is received includes into a special funding arrangement. And we at least are doing something, that we're getting some portion of the money to be able to do all the footpaths at the one time. Well, it's included in the policy to consider.
I'm happy to have that added into it. All right. Once again, this will come back and we're going to have a full discussion then. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, a declarator carried. Next item is Plan 01, page 61, tab 1, with a recommendation on page 62. Great. Question, you want to move the motion or?
Happy.
Yeah, can I just get a mover first?
I'll move it.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded, deputy mayor. Councillor Harrell, questions?
Looking at this, the total funding for this project required is approximately $8.6 million. Funding to date includes the $306,000 collected. Sorry, the total is $694,000. What is the funding source for the remainder? In other words, if we've only got $8.6 million, where's the rest coming from? And secondly, is there a timeframe for this project? And have the inevitable costs increases over time been factored into the overall funding needed?
I'll refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Thank you. Director of Planning and Compliance in relation to the question asked by councillor Harrell. I can have him repeat it, it's about where the funding is coming from. Councillor, I'm sorry, and when? Councillor Harrell, would you mind repeating the question?
What's happening is the total project is going to cost $8.6 million. So far, you've collected $694,000, in other words, under a million. Where are you going to find the remainder from? I assume this is going to be gathered over time. So when will the project actually get started? Where are you going to get the rest of the money from? And will you take into consideration the inevitable cost increases due to the time?
Through the CEO, that's correct. We don't have the full funding for the intersection. Some of it will be sourced from the developments that are yet to be considered and determined. So as each DA comes in and is progressed, we are collecting amounts that are a portion to the scale of the development. We've done a little bit of projecting as to which developments are yet to be developed and are valid in terms of being able to contribute to the intersection. In addition to that, we're undertaking some discussions with the Department of Planning and the proponent for the state significant industrial site that's up and running. There was a commitment for a certain amount of contributions to come from that development. And it's anticipated that any residual funding would be considered through either advocacy for grants and consideration of renewals of contributions plans. So it's not certain as to where we'll complete the remaining funding, where we will afford the remaining funding from. But we do know that there will be some more money coming through via local and state development. That's uncertain at the moment, but I can come to you on a timeframe.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, a declarator carried. Next item is Plan 02, page 70, tab 2, the draft LEP. Councillor Deputy Mayor, do you want to move a motion?
Yes, can I please move a motion to defer this for a very short time for a workshop? A workshop that I had thought we were having, but we haven't.
Yes, so defer, so defer the item until after a workshop is being held and consider calling an extraordinary meeting after the workshop.
And I'm very aware of the time sensitivity of this, so more than happy to come back for an extraordinary meeting to get that done, but I want all the information first. Thank you.
Yep, councillor Harrell, are you happy with that? Yeah, all right, cool. Just because you moved, I'll be the seconder. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, a declarator carried. And is that unanimous? Just making sure. Unanimous? Councillor Kurnib? In favour?
Yes.
Yep, great, wonderful. Next item is Plan 03, Conservation Zone Study, page 88, tab 3, recommend page 89. Deputy Mayor, you have a moment?
I have a motion.
Yes.
If I could ask the staff to, please. I'm happy to read through it while it's coming up, if you like, but it shouldn't be too long. There it is. I'll just give councillors a moment to read through and see if someone would like to second that for me.
I'm happy to second it. Did you want to speak for your motion, Deputy Mayor?
Very happy to speak for my motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think it's quite, quite simple what I'm asking for here. I would like the support of my fellow councillors. We've heard impassioned speeches this afternoon, we've received letters. When this study has come to council and previous studies have come to council, if I could quote one of our speakers from today, Mr. Mark Ockie, thank you very much. If council owns the land, they can do what they like. And I have to agree with you, sir. So I propose that we move for all council-owned land and land owned by other state authorities to be included and move forward with conservation zoning and that we do not change the zoning on the privately-owned properties identified in this study. Thank you.
Wonderful.
I have a question.
Councillor Rhodes?
The question is about the recommendation in the book. And just to be clear, what we are endorsing here is the continuing action of council. I mean, what we have done so far, and I know that we contacted the landowners, and we did that deliberately, so that they had forward warning that we were looking at conservation zones, but that isn't the end of it, they're going back to continue that collaboration and consultation. So we're endorsing the action of council to continue, the continued collaboration and consultation. So I'm very worried about endorse the with state owned sites only, because we're doing it, this was only the beginning, and I truly admire those people who came and spoke at today's meeting, they're telling us what they feel. That was the purpose of contacting them. But we've still got to talk to them, and they raised some very important issues. They should have the opportunity to have that further addressed. So I can't agree with that point two. And actually, I would prefer to put up the motion as per the book, if I am correct in my understanding of council's objective. We intentionally went out to those property owners and said, this is what we're thinking, so that they had forewarning and have ample opportunity to have it addressed with council. Is that correct, Mr Mayor?
So just to clarify, the the difference between councillor, the deputy mayor's motion she put forward and what's in the book is. Yep, so any privately owned property is not affected by a conservation, by by cancer zones, but everything else still happens. Is that?
So.
Sorry, just.
No, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, that's precisely the intent of my motion, is that we move forward. So we have done the background work. Again, we've done the background work on previous properties too, and here we are. I would like to continue moving forward with all of the properties that have been identified and recommended for conservation zoning that are owned by Liverpool City Council or by other state authorities only.
Yep.
So take all privately owned land out of the equation.
Yes. Councillor Green?
Could I ask a question of the director of planning? My understanding at the beginning of this process of the conservation zone study was at the end of it that we would it would provide consistency in how council decisions were made in terms of of areas where there is significant environmental concerns or specific or specific conservation issues there, that that was the reason why we went forward. If we were to follow the idea of excising out private land, would does that not affect the overall goal of the of the conservation zone to start with, is to deliver a consistent framework of decision making?
I refer to the CEO.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, I think you've got to go back a step. Council had passed certain resolutions, which then required initial public exhibitions, consultation, et cetera. And the original recommendations before you related and all encompassing. You've now received advocacy from residents in front of you today who've put their case as to why you shouldn't be considering privately owned property. The deputy mayor has now moved that it be amended to only include council property and in every other respect, and any government owned property, but excluding private property. So you'll still go out and follow each of the recommendations again on council owned property. It is now a matter for council to determine whether you're going to vote for the motion now put by the deputy mayor, or whether you want to amend it to include private property. But right now, what is before you is this in a very clear and concise way, and it really is a matter for council, it's not a matter for the director of planning, it's not a matter for the CEO.
Can I ask one question procedurally, sorry, after some discussions with a colleague? Point seven, we are, we, once this goes to gateway, we are, we need to receive a further report, is that correct? If there are no comments, can we move it straight through, or it needs to come back anyway?
No, it needs to come back, I need to follow exactly every one of your items. You're assuming there'll be no submissions, I don't know, say government might have some.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yes, so in this case, the delegation to the CEO is conditional, conditional, open to receiving on the further report. And I said, I said number eight, delegate to the CEO is is conditional, okay, to receive the further report on the outcome.
Sorry, the point, the point eight is just to allow that from now till sending it off, if there's any small amendments cleaning up, you know, then he can, we're delegating for him to do that. Like tiny little things, so this is just, it's just a minor procedural thing. Yeah, yeah, if they find a spelling mistake and all that sort of stuff. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. So just to clarify, and again to the CEO, that the process is that we have taken it out primarily to the community, so that they are aware that we're doing the conservation zoning. We've received back some information, particularly from the landowners, and I thank them for doing that. But to cut them out now, there were other things that they brought up, they brought up the fact about are they being fairly compensated? I'd like to see these issues addressed by council. And to cut them out and say, oh, well, we're just not going to be bothered with them, you know, no, we need to include them back into this, into this study that we're doing and the continuing collaboration and consultation with the communities of everybody that is affected. And then it goes to the to gateway, and then it comes back to council where there will be a reward, a report where we can find out what they said. And we will get a feedback from the council report as to their further collaboration and consultation, particularly with the private landowners. It is the right thing to do. Mr Mayor, I would move the foreshadowed motion as per the book.
Do you have a second for that? Second to councillor Green. Did you want to respond to that, CEO? Councillor Rhodes, can you turn off, if I can ask councillors to turn off their mic when they finish speaking, please?
Thank you. Councillor, it really in its simplest form is this, either you're including private property, private ownership, or you're not. If as a result of submissions made by the owners, council has determined in accordance with the deputy mayor's motion, that private property is not to be included, then there really is no aspect to further consult with private owners, or to consider compensation for private owners, or to have input from private owners, because they're no longer included in it. The concerns they raised were raised because they were initially included, that's been removed. Now it's a matter of going out and proceeding to gateway and doing all of the matters we have to do in relation to council owned land. Now, private citizens can still make all of the submissions they want to do, put all of anything they want to say in relation to council owned land, state government can do the same with state government land, but councillor, I don't see why there's a situation to go back to private owners if their land is no longer included.
Thank you, Mr CEO, well, I believe there is. They brought up important issues regarding compensation for their land, these are things that have to be addressed by the council.
Yes, so councillor, if you're removing private land ownership, I'm just saying, as moved by the deputy mayor, then there is no longer any need to discuss compensation.
I don't go along with the motion, that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, but I'm saying on, yeah, I'm with you, but I'm just saying on the issue of compensation, if you're not changing anyone's land, then there's no need to talk about compensation.
I'm not talking about that motion, I'm saying the motion as per the book and the private land still has to be considered.
Okay, I get you.
And still has, we still have to know all that information. So I've got the foreshadowed motion as per the book.
Then wouldn't you move to defer it then?
No.
Yeah, okay. The, all right, deputy mayor, would you like your right of reply?
I think what is a very simple motion has been convoluted. Look, I think my motion is very simple and straightforward. We move on as as we have been through this study, we're just excluding all the private homeowners, it's very clear and and simple, and I ask for support on this.
Wonderful. Now we'll put the motion as moved by the deputy mayor, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? A declarer carried, and I think we do have to record that vote anyway as a planning matter. So we will get the voting open.
Point of order, was it the foreshadowed motion that was supposed to be dealt with first?
No, foreshadowed motion after the, should the motion not succeed, then we will deal with the foreshadowed motion. Yep, okay, can we get the voting open, please? For all those in favour? Councillor Kineb? Deputy mayor's won, and we have had a crash.
Yes.
And it wasn't me. Councillor Kineb's a yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Ten, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, I now will call a recess, we'll return back here at four twenty. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is Plan zero four, sorry, declare the meeting resumed, Plan zero four, lot two, Newbridge Road, I think CEO, this is the one you have a conflict on?
Yes.
You staying in the room, just one moment, there you go, perfect timing, you can have a drink while you're out there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, you have a motion?
Yeah, happy to, happy to move as per the book, Mr Mayor, with the with the funds coming from general funds. Happy to second.
Seconded councillor Rhodes. Plan oh four, the concrete recyclers. Yep. No discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarer unanimous. Next item is Plan zero five, page one one two, tab five, with a recommendation on page one one two. Move councillor Harrell, second to councillor Hadeed, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarer that carried, oh, sorry, maybe, welcome back. Mr CEO. Next item is COM zero one, page one one seven, tab six, I missed councillor, deputy.
I'm happy to move.
Councillor Harrell, second, oh.
Questions.
You're seconding it?
Yeah, I'm happy to second.
Okay, yep, sorry. Yep, questions, councillor Harrell?
Yes, this is the grants and sponsorship programmes.
This is.
My question I have is, does council involve local service clubs, which also sponsor community grants into its grants and donations and community sponsorship policy? If not, can this be incorporated into this policy? And the reason being, service clubs are required by law to contribute to community sponsorship, but due to possible lack of communications between council and service clubs organisations, it often results in unfair distribution of funds and grants at several levels. E.g., it might be multiple requests to service clubs and council for the same thing. So what I'm suggesting is that council should, if it doesn't, liaise with service clubs, and understand it's several million dollars, you know, Mounties and a few of the others do it, and it runs into several million dollars. And if we're duplicating some of those things, I don't think that's a good idea.
CEO, I'll refer to.
Thank you, I'll ask the director of Community and Lifestyle to respond to that.
Thank you, oops, I was a little bit short for this, I think. Thank you, through the CEO, we do already support the club grants, so we promote on our socials when it happens, and then we are part of, it comes through our our portal, our grants portal, and we then help with the assessment and help with recommendations. So we are already a part of that process, it's just not within this policy, yeah.
All right. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarer that carried. Next item is COM zero two, page one fifty, tab seven, move deputy mayor, second to councillor Rhodes, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarer that carried. COM zero three, National Government Assembly, page one fifty nine, tab eight, recommendation page one fifty nine.
Happy to move.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Sorry, microphone, please, councillor.
Okay, thank you, so we're talking about the National General Assembly, I just wondered if we could, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but if we could ask for over the past twelve months, any motions that have been passed by this council that have a federal type flavour, whether we could get that brought to the next briefing session or the next time we group together as a group of councillors, so that we can go through and and make sure that we're submitting the right motions for the conference?
Yep. Yes. Councillors, can I please remind you that any councillor who wishes to propose the motion is that we do need it at council support by fifteenth of March? And of course, any councillor who wishes to attend, if you could please let council support know by fifteen March. I've directed council support after this meeting to remind you all of these two key dates and follow up with you, so that we can lock it in before the fifteenth of March, please.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarer that carried. Next item is COM zero four, page one sixty three, tab nine, with a recommendation on page one sixty four. Move councillor Moon, seconded councillor Goodman, any discussion? I'll put the mo.
Sorry, this is COM, COM.
COM zero four, community forums.
Yes, yes, I have quite a few. Sorry, I've got the page. First of all, congratulations to council staff for this report, it's the first of its kind, and I'm sure it's welcomed by the community. I'd like to suggest that regular updates are placed on the Liverpool Listen's website and social media platforms. Unfortunately, the current information on Liverpool Listen's is considerably out of date and needs urgent updating. I have some questions. Right, first one, report relating to Fifteenth Avenue, this is information that we got from the community forum, the feedback on that, and there were questions raised, answers given and so on. Report relating to Fifteenth Avenue, does council have a suggested timeframe on when the upgrading works will commence? It's an issue dating back to nineteen oh six, it's a long time. Do you want me to read through the questions first and the answer in turn?
Councillor, we may take some of these on notice and come back.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I ask councillor Harrell, if they're not really pertinent to know right right now, can I say you just submit them in writing to the staff and then let them provide the answers to you?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Yep, all right, great.
Through you, Mr Mayor.
Go for it now.
Okay, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Not just you, councillor Harrell, but this is how it's being prepared, open to any suggestions from any councillors seeking further information, different information, adjustments, again, so your questions on notice will help us make any necessary changes to it as well, councillor Harrell.
And I think councillor Harrell is that, you know, the community loves simplicity, I don't think many of them read our agendas like the way we read them. So if you, if we can summarise the issues per area by to a one pager, you know, what are the issues, what are we doing now, what are we doing in the medium, what are we doing long term, what are we lobbying for, hopefully they can bring everybody on board, not only the community, but also us as an. Hopefully they can bring everybody on board, not, not only the community, but also us as an organisation, and where, if we can have that for every area, because everyone's really keen about the areas, we saw that during the forums, the different issues, hopefully that can, um, simplify things and, and go from there, that will be developed as we go along.
Look, I've, I've actually got a couple of questions which you might want to answer because they are of concern, and, and one of those was, uh, was relating to complaints of excessive speeding along Carriage on Road. Has council applied to Transport for New South Wales to have mobile speed cameras placed on this road? And roads were speeding is an issue. To, to, to put that into context, I've done a little bit of checking. Residents can actually apply to Transport for New South Wales to have mobile speed cameras assigned to roads where they believe there are problems. I think this is something council should do, and I know the mayor has spoken about it in public. We, we probably need to do this and make sure that it happens. One of the things that's disappointing is that on Cow Pasture Road, opposite the Catholic Club, we do have mobile speed cameras there, it's an area that, as long as I've lived in Liverpool, we've never had an accident there. And so why put mobile speed cameras there when they're only revenue raisers? Where we need them in areas where you have got speeding, like where those two young people were killed, those sorts of things. So I really advocate that we need to, uh, get to the Transport for New South Wales and suggest that they do this on a regular basis, now maybe council has to do that on a regular basis. If we've got issues with roads where we've got problems, as raised in the community forums, maybe we should be, uh, pushing the Transport for New South Wales to get those mobile speed cameras allocated there.
Just, uh, through the CEO and the mayor, uh, the traffic committee does frequently request for, uh, traffic cameras, and, uh, so it's done through the traffic committee, but we'd have very little success.
Absolutely, sorry, um, I was going to ask, and I've been asked by residents, what is the status of live streaming community forums and storing the information on council's website for later viewing by residents and those unable to attend? Have we looked at that, um, I know we didn't livestream the last one for various reasons, but the reasons I've been given is that there are legal issues involved, can we look at trying to overcome those?
Yeah, look, I can answer that, Counsel Harrow, if you look back to when we started the meeting, the first thing that I said, that the meeting's going to be livestream except for the public forum part, so when you look at the reason why is that it exposes risks to council in any public broadcast, if somebody from the member of the public said something, then we're liable for defamation. We've also received, uh, uh, different, uh, a notice of concerns regarding defamation, so I think that's being consistent with what we do in the council meeting, makes sense to do it, um, over there as well. And as you can see with here, this meeting's actually, there's a delay, so from when we speak, if you look at the screen, there's a couple of seconds lag in between, that's to protect as well in case there's any, um, outburst of inappropriate commentary, the staff can cut the feed. But I'm happy for the CEO, if he wants to elaborate any further.
It is a matter for council, um, it is a matter, uh, they are council forums. My personal view is that it not be livestreamed for many reasons that are outlined. You don't, it's not a, an area, so in Parliament, for example, we livestream what happens in the chamber, but you don't livestream what happens outside in a, in a forum, that just doesn't occur. So when Cabinet went from region to region to region, meeting people, meeting residents, when ministers go out, you don't sit there and livestream it, you, you don't have the protections of the, the four walls, et cetera. So it, it's not something I believe in, but again, it's a matter for council, is that something that you want to look at in future?
Well, I, I would suggest that we look at ways of, uh, remediating the risks, I understand there are risks involved, but there's the other, other issue as raised is transparency. You know, if people are going to say things in, in a public forum, they should be able to, they should be liable for that, you need to be careful what you say, and I don't see why we should censor that, because that's basically what it comes down to. You know, I, I can't see how council can be responsible for, uh, something that the, the general public says. Different story if we said it as councillors, that I can understand that, but I would have thought that in terms of transparency, we should, uh, uh, allow that now, uh, we might have to issue something along the lines that council, you know, a legal disclaimer, that we need to be careful with what we say, but council itself, I don't believe should be responsible for that, but at the same time, I think council should be able to.
Oh, no, yours should have still been on.
Turn it back on, yeah, uh, that, that's just my opinion, and, and the general feedback I get from residents who, I can tell you that residents at the moment are also disappointed with the fact that we run our meeting today from two o'clock until whatever in the evening, we have, I field a lot of calls from residents saying, Peter, I can't attend during the day, I can only come at night, and we are one of the few councils that actually holds the meeting during the day, and we really can't expect people to take the day off to come in here like those people did, they had to speak here, I think that's a bit unfair to expect them to come in when we are, you know, we're, we're serving the ratepayers, and I know we did all the analysis and that was fine, but I think we really need to consider whether or not we, we do that. So the fact that you livestream this is one thing that allows residents to look at it, and the same applies to the forums in the evening, if we have forums in the evening, if we can, uh, record them and then make them available on our Liverpool Listen's website, because that's where all the forums information is, I just think we need to consider that, and we need to consider the legal implications and maybe consider the risks involved. That's it, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask on that, on that point, that we, if we're going to make, um, make some changes to that policy, that we actually have a workshop with proper advice around that? Because I'm aware of, of plenty of, um, legal action that has been brought on social media, if it's on your social media page, you don't need to have said it, but the fact that you facilitated that being on your page is a problem. Um, so I think we need to be very aware of the implications of what could be said and, and we, you know, in, in the heat of the moment by anybody at that, at, at any time, including in the public forum here. I, I just want to, you know, have some proper guidance around that.
Yeah, I mean, councillors firstly, as you know, post the election in September, new council, you'll be determining council meetings, when council meetings are to be held, forums, when they're to be held, I mean, that will be open to the new council, so you're talking about having a serious workshop and looking at and examining what changes you want to make that's going to occur over the next few months. I'm happy to take these on notice, let me have a look at it, let me work with my staff, but again, you will be revisiting all of this, um, after the inductions that are going to be held with the new council in early October, and setting your own agendas, your own timetable for meetings, times for meetings, that's something that the new council will determine and vote on, so whatever you try and implement today will only be for a very short period of time.
I wasn't advocating change, I was just pointing it out.
Yep, no, but I will look at all the matters you've raised.
Did you want to raise something, Counsel Caliendo, or you?
Oh, sorry.
It, it was in the same vein as Counsel McNaul's point around, um, you know, even with a disclosure, uh, actually firstly, do we, um, provide a disclosure or disclaimer during the community forums? And, um, then how much protection does that afford us? And, um, you know, balancing that with obviously the, um, the need for ratepayers to, um, to have their representatives be transparent and open and accountable, um, because I think the, uh, Council, um, Counsel Rhodes raised a really great point when we were debating this issue, um, probably in the last term of council where we decided to livestream council meetings and have that as part of our code of meeting practice, where it was, this was a number of years ago, CEO, in response to your confused look, um, where, you know, it, it was actually a point of, of great importance for all of the councils at the table then to have meetings, um, livestreamed so that our community could, um, could engage. We live in a, in a community that, um, you know, often works particularly shift work, that is often, um, you know, unable to access their representatives, and so being able to not only view the meetings as they're happening, but being able to go back and look at how decisions are made, look at the discussions and the points and the, the things that feed into the decisions that are made are incredibly important as well.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit on that as well, because, uh, if we did have it livestreamed or, uh, put onto the council website afterwards, it would enable councillors to be aware of all the questions that were asked, which has been a real problem, I requested to, if we, councillors could be given that information and the person who, who asked the question, and, uh, that, that was refused, but if it's up there on the, uh, website, we can go to it ourselves and see who said what. That's the problem, uh, constituents think that we remember that they may have said something, but, uh, if we don't get the notice of what was said at the meeting, the live streaming might assist to that.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I think that should also, sorry, Counsel Goodman?
Does that also include committees?
What do you mean about committees?
To be livestreamed? And recorded?
Huh?
And recorded?
Hmm, I think that's actually, that's actually a good suggestion.
For, for minute-taking purposes, but, um, they're not the general public, they're people that have been accepted onto those committees, so it's a different thing, it's not a public meeting.
Sorry, one second, one second, Counsel Rhodes, can you turn your microphone off, please? Yes, sorry, wait, sorry, wait, sorry, one sec, did you finish, then we'll get to you, Counsel Amun, Counsel Goodman? Sorry, now go for it, now, now press the button?
So should, uh, should committees also be recorded and livestreamed for the community so we can be transparent?
Difficulty we would have with that is what I just said, that you have to apply to be on that committee, which is a different thing to a public meeting when everybody is invited. Because it's a community committee meeting that people apply to be on that committee.
But it's still run under the Code of Meeting Practice, a committee meeting, so, you know, it, I think this all should be discussed as a, sorry, we're just taking over, all discussed holistically, um, you know, with all of the forums, the committees, the council meeting, the public forum, and probably a decision for the next council.
Councillors can always access the record.
So you're telling, a committee, you have to apply to be on the committee, we have to be elected to be in this meeting, does that mean we shouldn't be livestreaming it?
Sorry, Ca, Counsel Rhodes, so, sorry.
A councillor can access that, that information?
Through, through the chair, please, um, and can I say ultimately, you know, I think Counsel Goodman makes a good point, if we're going to look at what gets livestreamed and the issue of transparency, committees make recommendations to council, there are dis, there's significant discussions on there, members of that are at least subject to the, community members, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're also subject to the Code of Meeting Practice, so they do at least have a for, a way to go about it. So if, if we're having this conversation and people want to be increased transparency, then a hundred percent, I think we should be looking at that as well, it makes sense, you know, you do, you would do that, you would do the briefing sessions, so if there's nothing to hide, then we should be able to put it all out there.
As a matter of fact, I think you'll find in the, uh, the committee meetings or the, uh, Code of Meeting Practice, they are supposed to be recorded and made available to the public, we've just never done it.
Yeah, I think it's, as CEO's saying, different, different livestream, and I think also what happened in the last term of council, that the state government through the Office of Local Government made amendments to the Code of Meeting Practice, where councils had to livestream, so it's no longer optional.
Just to clarify on that, um, a council, uh, councils have the option of doing so, but council by resolution must make the decision to do so, so for example, Hillshire Council has repeatedly made the decision not to livestream their council meetings.
Can we get some, can we put that question on notice just to clarify, please, because I was understood the other way, so, make a clarif. Nice, yeah, that's fine, all right, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, against, declare carried. The recommendation in the book was the motion that everybody was so interested in, thank you, Counsel Harrow. You started it. We deal with Plan Five very efficiently, very efficiently, but, do you have some questions about it? Happy to recommit the matter, all right, next item is Corp Zero One, uh, page one seventy nine, tab ten, recommendation on page one seventy five.
Move it, but I have questions.
Yeah, uh, yes, Counselor, do you have a second for your?
So we can discuss it?
Yes, second, Deputy Mayor, yep.
Yeah, I've, uh, I have some issues with that, section four point eight two, parts F and G. This is to do with planning panel members, we, we have a planning panel where there are, this is the Greater Sydney Planning Panel, there are two, uh, council members on that. We talk about alternate members, and we talk about understudy, that's confusing there, there are supposed to be two members attending every one of those sessions, and if one is away, and the, the so-called understudy isn't informed of that, then you, the, the planning panel is actually breaking its, its code, if you like, there ought to be five members, there's only four. Now, quite often, members are not notified, the alternate is not notified in time to, to go to those meetings, so you've only got four out of five that are there, which I think is, to put it bluntly, is undemocratic, because you're supposed to have two councillors representing the community and three from the state government. So, um, I think that needs a bit of clarification, uh, which, who's the understudy? Do we have the two councillors and an understudy? Which sort of makes sense, because if you have the two councillors and one is away, at least the understudy is aware of what's going on. Do you understand what I'm getting at? Well, it, it isn't happening. Perhaps we should move a motion to defer this for further information.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to second that, um, and on the, considering that the whole policy's up, can I recommend to councillors, if you indulge, an extra point, in that as we're approaching the council elections, that the point forward read in, or investigate ways that we can improve the policy that would encourage more, uh, um, more, uh, females to run for council and single parents. And I state that, I know there is a, and I'm just talking about that, there is something that does talk about childcare and things like that, but it seems very clunky, right? And I think that if we really want to encourage more females in participating, or single parents as well, that they should, uh, look at ways of how we can make it better and easier to use, Counsel Caliendo? If, sorry, can I just, is the mover in second or happy for that to be considered as part of the deferral?
Can you explain, um, is that for those people to go on to this committee, are we talking about this committee?
No, we're on the civic expenses payments policy. The whole policy, so what's before us now is the whole policy, not just that one element of the policy.
Let's discuss it at the next meeting.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, let them consider if they can, some ideas, right, that could be brought back. So while we're deferring this, that they also, as part of the, that timeframe, that the count, the policy's not in front of us, they might be able to come back with us and say, hey, you deferred this, and by the way, why don't you do this, this is going to make life easier.
I'm still unsure where he's going to with it.
Sorry, can I also, um, recommend that, um, you include, that you include, um, people who live with disabilities in that as well? Because I imagine, um, you know, there are many people in our community who might find that a barrier in terms of, you know, parking and, and those sorts of things which fall under the, the remit of this policy.
Yeah, happy with that, yeah, but CEO wants my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So why don't we just encourage all people to apply?
So, uh, councillors, if I can, uh, advise this, if I may, what's before you was a recommendation, you are now going to defer this item in its entirety, as such, you can't really start making amendments to the recommendation. However, you have now advi, uh, asked of me as the CEO and my team to not only just look at what's in the recommendation, but to relook at the entire policy and suggest any other changes to the policy, and to see how we can make the policy to assist more inclusive aspects of councillors, so not simply, um, female, people with disability, seniors, core communities, et cetera. So not simply female, people with disability, seniors, core communities, et cetera. We can look at all of that and come back to you, but it can't be in the recommendation. What's now is defer or not defer?
Thank you, that's, that's, that was what I wanted to say, is that we can tidy up that language to be a little bit more inclusive. Thank you. No, 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 but it's a note. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, it's moved that we, are you happy with, councillor Hall, are you happy to withdraw your? Yeah, are you happy to withdraw your motion and that we just defer this? We're just deferring this.
Yes, I'm happy with the workshop. It needs, definitely needs discussing.
Done. All right. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Next item is Corp 02, the Public Interest Disclosure Policy, page 203, tab 11.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Maybe? Oh no? No, sorry councillor, I will draw that call. Sorry councillor Green, you had to want to speak for or against?
I had a basic question. In reading the policy, the interpretation that I had is like, if a disclosure is made, then it's council that is investigating council. And I was just wondering, is it worthwhile to have like a better, or more, I don't know, a more comprehensive discussion, framework on how the decisions are made? Just so, you know, it, that really, it, that the policy really communicates the fact that if council is investigating council, that it's also at an arm's length, that we do everything that we can to ensure that there is no conflict of interest in who is, might be appointed to investigate or anything. So that, you know, that all parties can have confidence in the process. I absolutely support the new act. And I brought a question with notice and a motion to the floor last year about it. But, you know, in terms of having a robust system that all parties feel confident in. So just if there's a little bit more explanation on how the investigation might be undertaken and the steps that we would take to make sure that, you know, that it is, that, you know, that all the boxes are ticked in terms of accountability, transparency and eliminating conflicts of interest.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, look, thank you for that. I mean, this pit is of course designed not only in accordance with the legislation, but follows very much all of the recommendations from the state government, the office of local government, et cetera. It's the format, it covers everything. That's the first thing. Secondly, in some of the matters you raise, and maybe I can get a clearer understanding if we speak offline, but there are many circumstances where if, for example, the complaint comes to me as the CEO, I am very restricted in being able to discuss or in any way identify the person who made the disclosure and all aspects and they're protected. And this clearly puts all of those aspects in the place. Very clear obligations on my part as the CEO, which of course goes all the way through to my directors, to my staff. Same obligations on councillors as to matters being reported, whether it's to ICAC, Office of Local Government, et cetera. All covered. So I'd be a little hesitant to start looking at how I tweak this, change this, add to this when we're really following, first the legislation, secondly the Office of Local Government, similar state departments. You know, health, for example, health districts, all of that follow exactly the same. I know that because I sit as chair of one of the boards of the health district, we've got the same obligations in our pit, et cetera. So it's actually quite a lot of work was done on this and, you know, the legal team, I congratulate them for being able to put this together. But, you know, for me, this is what it is. Now, from that, we're currently, Mr Mayor, councillors, we're currently finalising and working on the new councillor handbook that will be provided to all councillors post-election in September. Also the workshops and the briefing sessions that will take place in inductions for the new councillors. A lot of this will be covered. If councillors feel that they want a workshop or a briefing session on the pit prior to the election, just let me know. Happy to put one together.
Any further questions? Great, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare unanimous. Next item is Corp 03, tab 238, it's page 238, tab 12, recommendation on page 239. And I would like to move a motion. I would like to move the motion, let me just pull it back up. Corp 03. Corp 03. I would like to move the recommendation as per the book with a point two. Allocate $50,000, $50,000 to create a position of security and asset management. That's not a manager, but I couldn't find anything that makes the acronym work better. Now councillors, if I can speak for that, if I have a seconder? Second to councillor Goodman? Security and asset management. Just for this financial year? Yeah. That's the one quarter. For this, yeah, for this financial year. So councillors, we have over 200 buildings, billions of dollars of assets. And it's come to my attention that we don't really have a holistic approach to how we secure them. We have issues with regards to rubbish dumping happening in the same locations. And councillors have all been very enthusiastic and supporting funding to deliver CCTV cameras and so on and so forth to help prevent that dumping. But what's been apparent is that we need a, an organised strategic approach. And there is, everyone in council has their own sort of roles to do, that if we're going to be serious about securing ourselves, we need someone who can work that out. We have an issue with regards to our car park, the Warren Service Way and security issues in there that's causing significant challenges. And with all due respect to the CEO, he has many things to worry about, rather than how to run the security guards and how to sort out those issues. There are other issues in the area, whether it's Macquarie Mall, we've seen what's happened in this building over the holidays. We know, we always get reports, there's always something that's going on, something damaged, something vandalised. So I believe this will save council a significant amount of money in the medium to long run. We just have someone who can do that, having a former detective, chief detective inspector, who, we've had discussions about this and believes that this could actually help us in our asset management. And I believe, I strongly recommend it, and I think this goes ahead. It will give our community a better level of service. Hopefully get rid of bloody rubbish dumping or we'll catch people, they'll know they're not to do it here. And we'll hopefully secure our assets. Councillor Caliander?
Thank you. So I've heard from a number of community organisations who have, after, you know, putting in for a booking for a council venue, have been advised that they need to provide security for the event or for the booking that they have made. As all of us know, many of the community organisations within our area operate on, you know, the smell of an oily rag on a shoestring budget. And, you know, security costs for sometimes days, if not multiple days at a time, put a huge add-on to the cost of running an event or an initiative, which then means that more, you know, programmes and events and things fall over and are unable to be run. Can I request that we look at that particular issue in respect of bringing up security into it? Because I think it actually decreases the equity of the events and activities that our community has access to if we are putting such, you know, such add-on costs onto community organisations.
I think that makes sense and it's a good point councillor, that, you know, if you, and if you had, I guess, as someone who was a security specialist working at council, they'll be able to say, well, maybe you may not need that much, or you can do something and, you know, or here's, yeah. I think that could be done then. It's a very good point.
So just to give you some context, I spoke to an organisation last year who had an additional $12,000 added to the cost of running their event. That means that, you know, the max council grant that could be provided was $10,000. That's pointless. No, it wasn't. It was a religious event, right? So, but it was across multiple days. It means, you know, especially given some of the size of our venues are not replicated anywhere else in South West Sydney, some of our community organisations are forced into requiring particular venues that only we can provide. So if they then have to pay, you know, tens of thousands of dollars additionally for security that we have, you know, said that as a condition of hiring this venue, you have to provide and you have to pay for, that means that our community suffers because the chances that event continues to run is much, is much lower.
Can you put your microphones on? Sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, picking up on councillor Caliander's point, it's a really good point because somebody in this position can also look at our risk management sort of stuff when it comes to security and maybe have a little bit fairer, yeah, I support you. I think that's a really good initiative to add into this role.
Yep, great. Councillor Hall?
I think you need to explain what that means. Allocate $50,000 per acquisition in security and asset management.
What does it mean?
Not acquisition.
What did I say?
For a position.
That's what I thought that's what you meant.
$50,000 to create a position.
Just on that though, can I ask what type of position are we allocating $50,000 for? Because it's not going to buy us very much.
No, no, it's only for this financial year. So if we look at it now, we've only got a quarter left. Yeah, we'd be lucky to probably have someone. Yeah.
Can we add on there for this financial year?
For this financial year, if we can add that in this budget. I've been advised this is probably $150,000 a year position annually, sort of a thing, to get that right skill set. And that's what we'll consider that as part of the budget as we go ahead. And that'll be like a new initiative. Yes, councillor Green?
Be able to ask a question, please?
Yes, councillor Green?
I'm aware of, I have been contacted by a particular community group that has booked the Hilda Davis Centre and for an event. It's a religious event, no alcohol. And they've just been told that they have to provide security. So could I ask, is this appropriate to say that the decision-making on that actually be put on hold? And in terms of, you know, requiring organisations to pay for their own security until we can get this sorted out? Because it seems unfair imposition.
Can I recommend?
Unless it's high risk and it's someone's 21st birthday party, of course.
Can I recommend that you raise that with the Director of Community and Lifestyle?
I'd like to, thank you.
Yeah, great. But it's, um.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got a question. When we're providing the security and something happens at one of these events, does that implicate council if there's a legal action taken or something like that? I don't know where we stand in providing security.
When we provide security, you mean just in general, not about this particular element?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not just.
Okay, thank you councillor. So there really are, there's a number of hybrid situations, but let's take the two absolute situations. If we have a council event and we have our own security here that we pay for, then we are responsible for the actions of that security. Of course, the contract we have with the security firm that's providing that security, we can also seek indemnification from them if the cause of action is as a result of inappropriate behaviour of their employee. So all of that, and then there's also the insurances, et cetera. So we're covered. In situations where it's not our event, the 21st birthday party, if I can use that as an example, we don't provide the security. We provide the hall, we provide the terms and conditions for the use of that hall in that temporary licence. And one of those conditions may well be that they must provide adequate security. And they have to establish to us they're doing that. So when they go out and obtain the security, they hire the security, they pay for the security, they're responsible for it. We could still be responsible under our insurance that if someone tripped in the hall because there's a defect in the hall, there's occupied liability, yes, but we wouldn't be responsible for the security. Of course, what's being raised by councillor Green and what's been raised by other councillors for us to have a look at is that when they go out to hire security for the event, they get the bill or the quote, and suddenly they're horrified as to what that is. And that's where they're coming back to us, seeing if we would waive the requirement for the security. That's what I understood councillor Green was raising.
To be clear, can we waive that, you know, provision for security? We could provide it ourselves, but...
Well, I would be very reluctant that we were to provide our own security at someone's 21st birthday party and take that responsibility. And in any event, we still have to charge the person for whatever it costs us. It's a far better, that's their responsibility. We have a discretion. That we look at each circumstance in its own, you know, where's the venue, what's the function, who's attending the function, what is possibly involved, alcohol, no involvement of alcohol. I mean, all of that gets taken in and that's where the director and her team look at it and impose the conditions.
So there's no regulation actually saying that council has to, with an event, they've got to have their own security?
So there are numerous regulations under the Liquor and Licensing Act that are there. But if there's no alcohol, we've got duties as well based on responsibility, et cetera. I just, if I can say this, this motion before you is not on that. What was being raised, and I think it was councillor Caliander raised, the point is, if you're allocating $50,000 for a person or a company to look at security and asset management in relation to our council properties and others, it would be a much better holistic approach that we also look at other aspects of security, including private functions, et cetera. Because this person may say, where we're saying you need three security guards, this person's assessment, who's an expert, might say, with all due respect, you only need one. Why are you imposing three? So that's really what I'm, that's the gist of what I'm getting at, what this motion is asking of me.
So where's the money come from now? If you approve the budget?
From the existing salary budget.
You add this extra plan. So I want to know where the money will come from, which area you have to cut to make the $50,000 available?
Yep. The, I'm happy to put, do you want us to define it from general fund, if I can look at the Director of Corporate Services? Yes, yeah, great. Yeah, so, sorry, we'll put that just to be clarified on from general funds. Yeah, only for four months' contract for the moment. And then for next year, we look at as part of next year's budget, as part of the positions, as a new initiative.
Councillor, it's not a, we're not hiring a full-time employee that we're hiring in perpetuity. It's a contract for four months. And then at the next budget, you can determine whether you want to hire a full-time employee or you want to do a 12-month contract or a two-year contract.
You will for the next year's budget, you will be. Next year's budget. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare the motion unanimous. Next item is the investment report, Corp 04, page 274, tab 13. Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is CFD 01, my annual progress report, page 284, tab 14, with a recommendation on page 284. Move councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is Operation 01, page 286, tab 15, recommendation on 286. I would like to move a motion. I would like to move a motion, if I can get it up on the screen, please. I'm happy to read it out while it gets on to the screen. Prepare as a new initiative in next year's budget, the allocation of $600,000 for the installation of asphalt footpaths in Austral. Two, provide a process for community members to recommend locations for footpaths in Austral. Three, direct the CEO to immediately prepare for the work to commence in July 2024 after the adoption... after the adoption of the twenty four, twenty five budget. Four, thank the local member Nathan Hagerty for his letter and write to him asking him to match the funding as proposed by council. Five, adopt the proposed funding of two hundred thousand dollars per year for ongoing years as proposed in the original recommendation. Seconded deputy mayor?
Next years.
Huh? So the six hundred K is for next year's budget? Twenty four, twenty five budget? Yep, and the two hundred thousand dollars per year is as, if you look at the original recommendation, it's proposing that we do two hundred thousand dollars years of works for up to the twenty nine, oh, up to twenty nine thirty for the next five years. Nicole, councillor Green?
Can I, thank you for the motion. Can I also highlight that there was a death, a pedestrian death in Austro this last week? Person walking on the road because there was no footpath to walk on, they were actually going to the bus stop. So in terms of, it's very timely and certainly something that, you know, for council, definitely that we should do, could do and must do.
Yep, thank you councillor Green. Councillor Kelly anda?
Just in terms of point four, I believe it is. There are obviously funding rounds proposed through various, you know, state government grant rounds. Has council got, you know, applications or, you know, documentation ready to go? Because I, just speaking from personal experience, I know recently I got applications from Fairfield Council for a grant round, but no applications from Liverpool Council. So if we're wanting to maximise, you know, our spend and our capacity to take advantage of some of this funding, we need to have the documentation ready to go.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, the director of planning and compliance.
Thank you. Through the CEO, I'll refer to our principal transport planner, Charles Rialfi, to provide some specific advice on our ongoing applications for grants in relation to roads and the network.
Through the CEO, council officers apply for grants under what is normally referred to as the Federal Road Safety Programme. And the state governments save road systems all the time. And for probably the last ten years, we receive about five hundred or a thousand each year. In addition to that, the operations group or the operations team applies for footpath paving each year. But they tend to be for established areas. So I'm not very sure whether an area like Austro would meet the criteria for the application. But council staff regularly applies for funding.
Can I recommend councillor Kelly anda, if you have any particular programmes that the state government has, maybe if you can forward them over to the staff so they can? Is there any that are available for footpaths in new areas? Sorry, can you put your microphone on, please?
It might be useful to flag that in the motion as, you know, a proactive strategy to be prepared for, you know, funding rounds to come and that sort of thing. Like I said, I regularly, you know, share information with, whether it's the CEO or relevant directors or whatever, about grant rounds that are available. The most recent community building partnerships grant, uh, community building partnership grant round received applications for significant amounts of money from Fairfield Council, but nothing from Liverpool. So just thought I'd highlight that.
Thank you councillor. We're continually with all of the state and federal MPs applying. We're very grateful for what's provided. You and I have discussed, you know, if there is anything you think we've not applied for and should be, you know, we would please ask you to bring it to our attention and we'll immediately put the application in. It's, it's something, you know, we absolutely operate on. And I've got the whole Greens team and new changes to the Greens team to make sure that we're continually doing that. I know there's certain organisations that have a full-time squad doing nothing else but every single day looking for openings on grants and applying for grants. On the basis of they get three out of ten, they're happy. I mean, we are similar to that, but of course, we do rely very heavily on a close working relationship with our state and federal MPs.
Perfect timing.
Perfect. And send the treasurer my sincere regards and looking forward to his cheque.
Wonderful. Wonderful, okay. If there's no further discussion, I will put the motion all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. All right, next item is Brickmakers Creek Master Plan, Operation Zero Two, page two ninety, recommendation on page sixteen, page two ninety.
Hope you move that way.
Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Amun, any discussion? Yes councillor?
Of course I'm going to discuss this. Did you expect?
It's not going to be a concrete channel with pipes underneath it.
How did you guess that? Yeah, look, I'd like to speak against it. And the reason is, has anyone really studied the area and the flooding that's occurred there for the last fifty years? The current dish drain is extremely effective, virtually maintenance-free and long-lasting. This portion of Brickmaker Creek is a wide-channel flood-prone area. The water flow velocity will wash away, damage and destroy the proposed landscaping and water features. It will introduce enormous amounts of maintenance, health and safety issues in terms of stagnant water, mosquito problems, unpleasant odours due to stagnant water ponds and dead animals trapped in them. Ibis birds nesting in the area, accumulate rubbish and debris deposited from upstream regular flooding events. It will introduce vermin, rats, snakes, mice and mosquitoes into the area. Numerous attempts have been made along the dish drain to improve perceived water quality by constructing small dams and reed ponds further downstream. All have failed miserably to satisfy some impractical academic exercise. Brickmakers Creek along the rear of Collimore Park is an example of the issues that residents bordering the creek face. This project will cost millions in initial construction in addition to ongoing unsustainable maintenance costs. My suggestion is to either leave the dish drain or incorporate a low-flow drain that will allow the area to be used for recreational purposes in dry periods. Anything else is a waste of time and money, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Question, Mr Mayor?
Yes, councillor Rhodes?
The funding for this is in a situation that we have to spend the funding. Do we get the opportunity to re-look at what we're doing down there or tell us, what's the go?
I'm getting a head shake.
Can we get out of it?
We lose forty million bucks. I'll refer to, through the CEO, director of operations.
Yeah, through the CEO, no, we don't spend the money, we give it back. So I. Sorry, it went off. What happened, councillor, sorry, through the CEO, is that we prepared what we wanted to get the grant money for and variations to the grant money are not negotiable. Don't forget, the government at the time is no longer in. And the appetite we've seen even for minor amendments to any of the West Invests projects is almost zero. I would also comment at this stage, on page two ninety two, this is a revitalisation project, it's a very small strip. And it actually aims to transform the existing concrete drain back to its natural bare earth surroundings. And it has been the subject of water-sensitive urban design. And our designers, Erbus, have come back and said this is an appropriate treatment for Brickmakers Creek.
You can organise a bus tour if you want councillor Harrell? No, just sorry, I was just joking. In case you want to organise a bus tour to go there and have a look.
I did that the last time and there was only one councillor who came along. And while you're on that, that, you've started me now. While you're on that, there was only one councillor came along and actually looked at that and, and the director came along. And what we saw in Camden, this is what we're going to get. If you're going to spend this money, and I suggest by all means do it, but you are going to regret this. I've lived in Liverpool for over fifty years. I know exactly what happens in that area. And I can tell you, the flooding there is going to wash away anything you put there. So by all means, spend the multi-million dollars, but remember, I told you so.
To end support of councillor Harrell, it's similar to the dog park that we did in, along at CPAC Road. Same thing, you can't stop nature. And that's the problem.
All right, if there's any further discussion, I'm happy to speak for the motion. Yeah, I think that it's wonderful that we're finally getting along, forty million dollars, great community outcome. Look, yes, it's never going to be perfect, but I think I want to thank the staff for moving this along and looking forward to the the tens of thousands of people who call Liverpool home to be able to enjoy that very important open space that's unembellished at the moment. So hopefully it should be really good. I'll put the motion, if no one else, and they say all those in favour, against, declare it carried. P S, I told you so. Let that be recorded in the. Next item is Operations Zero Three. Liverpool Growth Centre biodiversity offset strategy, page two ninety six, tab recommendation. Put the recommendation on page two hundred and ninety seven, move councillor Green? Seconded councillor Amun, go for it. Yes councillor?
Oh, come on, let me ask a question. On page two ninety eight, with the explanation as to what the anomalies were, that given the inconsistencies which is attributed to the department on the government maps and the SEP, is it possible that recompense, recompense can be sought from the government to assist in the, any purchases that need to be made? Given that, you know, the mistakes or, you know, the wrong information was supplied in the first instance? Because otherwise, it looks to me, I don't know my interpretation, I could be wrong, but it's, it looks a bit like cost shifting from the state government to local government. And, you know, we've discussed this practice before. It's really unfair to council and to our ratepayers.
Thank you councillor. I'm happy to ask the director of planning, but my understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected by the planner, the director for planning, please correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is we have tried. My understanding is that we've discussed, et cetera. Happy to try again, but, you know, the reality is, and sadly, one of our councillors just left, the reality is I don't believe we're going to be successful. But I'll ask the director to comment.
Thank you. Through the CEO, nothing much further to add except to say that we have a formalised working group with the department to discuss growth area precinct planning problems. And this came up as front and centre of those. The department said, we'll help you sort it out, but we're not paying for it. And it was a continuing, it's been a works in progress and the manager of Austro Delivery has been working actively with the department to try and understand how we can get some recoup money. But with no luck until this time. As a growth area, would we be able to add an amendment in there for, to write to our state members, the member for Leppington and member for Liverpool, as well as the minister for planning? But as a growth centre, a growth LGA, that, you know, those kinds of, these kinds of issues impact on the timelines of
Well done.
of delivery, of whether they be basins, whatever, that this is what causes problems. So if we can make, I guess you can make it out to be much clearer than what I'm stumbling around on. But, yeah, it seems to me a point where advocacy and pointing out the inequity of the problem in shifting it.
Can I suggest that we add all state members that cover the LGA? Thanks.
Great, wonderful. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare that unanimous. We now have, all right, committee minutes. Move that we move as a whole. Seconded, everybody? No? Only one, which one? Traffic, all right. All right, move that all the whole except for the one of them, traffic committee, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried, councillor Harrell, traffic committee?
Sorry. What I spoke about before, when we talked about mobile speed cameras? I think this is an opportunity, and I had a notice of motion, which you might want to modify, incorporate, that council investigates the possibility of signing transport for New South Wales mobile speed cameras to known speed problems areas within the LGA and bring a report to council to see if that was able to be done, something along those lines. Bring a report to council by the end of April twenty twenty three.
The, I've written a letter. We've had, we've obviously heard today of the tragic circumstances that happened in September. We had another double fatality two months later. We also had a fatality on the weekend. And in that situation, I called that councils have the ability to deploy speed cameras, right, mobile speed cameras. And not for revenue raising, but to at least as a demerit point deterrent. Because we obviously get the calls immediately and we can be very, very reactive versus this process where we can even, you know, we have to hope that somebody listens to us. But if you can imagine if we had our own camera, we could move it around. So I would like to recommend that we focus our energy, we could do this as well, but we focus our energy on advocating that we, that councils can have a speed camera, that they, a mobile speed camera that they can deploy. Councillor Green?
As I attend the same traffic committee as councillor Harrell. And there's been on several occasions over the last four months at least where we have passionately advocated and Transport for New South Wales staff also attend that meeting for mobile speed cameras in particular areas where residents are reporting, consistent reports of speeding. Now, I don't quite understand this, Traffic for New South Wales people will sit there and they'll say, oh, yes, yes, council can make recommendations and can request that mobile speed cameras be placed in particular areas. I mean, I'd like to, I mean, if we can, to write to Traffic for New South Wales for explanation as to why, you know, we keep on making the request and nothing happens. The staff there say, yes, yes, we can do it, but there's no action on their part. And the fact that, you know, that more of our, our community are being either killed or seriously injured through a speed or whatever is, is just terrible. That, you know, that there's something that they can do by allowing us and putting out the mobile speed cameras, but they're not actually following through on the action.
Are you happy to add that to your motion councillor Harrell?
Mr Mayor, if I can give some information?
Yep.
There is a process that happens at the traffic committee and you would be aware of it. What happens is that we report an area that we're getting constituents saying there's, you know, this terrible thing has happened, we've got to stop people speeding along this street. And then what happens is that council goes out and they do traffic counts and speed things to find out how fast they're going along there. And the problem that we run into is that the majority of the cars are doing the right thing. It'll be one car, or I don't know how the numbers, but a number of cars that is not significant enough for Traffic New South Wales to, to say that we need a traffic camera there. That's what's happening. So I don't know how we get around that. What it is that it's not everybody speeding and there's got to be a certain number of cars that are exceeding the speed limit for a traffic camera to be put in. Our problem is that it's hewn. Our problem is that it's hoons that are doing it and I don't know how we, we address that. And the other thing we've got to face is that Liverpool, you know, is renowned for the greatest number of traffic accidents in Sydney. Yes. So it's only going to get worse, you know, and I don't know how we, the problem is, it's not the lot of cars that are speeding, which would give us a traffic camera, it's one or two, and that's not sufficient. That's how they base their decisions. Yes, that you take that to the traffic committee and then they will explain it again.
Good, good.
I am also, we're at the traffic committee on two occasions, we have passed through the minutes that a traffic summit was to be called and with stakeholders, New South Wales, the local police, Traffic for New South Wales, the education, driver education department of Traffic for New South Wales, and also other driver education. Clearly there's a problem. I haven't seen any action as to, or, you know, I'm not sure what, how that has progressed, but it's really clear that the traffic summit is something that we need desperately to try and work out in a holistic way, how, whether through public education, whether it's more resourcing for Liverpool Police in their Highway Patrol, whether it's more mobile speed cameras, but it's, but that round table to try and nut out this problem would be the right place to start. And I'm aware that that has been brought up and passed twice at recent traffic committees.
Councillor Hall?
Yes, just to add to those comments that were made. Currently, Traffic for New South Wales allows residents to ask for mobile speed cameras to minor speed related issues in their area. You can do that now. You can ring them up, say you've got an issue and they will tell you whether or not they're going to do that. I suggest they do. The point is, if residents can do that, why can't council? We certainly have a greater clout, if you like, for issues that we know about. The other issue is here, at the traffic committee, one of the major complaints we get is about speeding, hooning. And what's the answer? Speed humps. I absolutely hate speed humps. The reason being, it punishes everybody and those that are guilty of speeding and hooning, you know, they're affecting and having a detrimental effect on everybody else. So I don't believe in, in speed humps, I think that's a last resort. We should have speed cameras, mobile speed cameras in residential areas to catch those that are responsible. That way, law abiding people don't get punished. But at the moment, eighty percent of, the statistics show that eighty percent of the speeding, sorry, eighty percent of residents do not speed, it's the twenty percent, yet, you know, eighty percent of the innocent people get punished by having speed humps. It's not just a matter of the, the fact that it's inconvenient, it actually does damage to your cars. It does damage to people's health. If you've got, you know, back injuries and the like, those sorts of things do injuries to that. And I don't see why everybody should get punished for a few. I have absolutely no qualms in suggesting that we should have a multitude of speed cameras in those areas to catch those that are responsible. Don't punish innocent people. And when we talk about the, the speed, and we talk about this in, you know, every traffic committee meeting we have, we get requests for speed humps. And, and I'm totally against them, I think we should be doing the, the other thing that I did, the reason currently Transport for New South Wales now allows residents to, to ask for those speed, mobile speed cameras, that was because I approached the then, the member for Holsworthy, Melanie Gibbons, I spoke to her about it and I said, this needs to be changed. Prior to that, mobile speed cameras were not supposed to be in residential areas. That was the rule. They were only allowed to be on main roads controlled by the state government. Now, I don't know what happened, but it was changed. And so now we should use that as an opportunity to make sure we get mobile speed cameras in residential areas where you've got issues.
Thank you, just one moment, just one moment, can I just defer to the CEO for a comment please?
Thank you. Item one should read notes Liverpool local traffic. You're not in a position to say approves because there's no financial details that have been provided.
Thank you, councillor Goodman.
I believe a speed camera is not a deterrent, it's a deterrent, it's, it's just a punishment after the fact that they were already speeding, but a speed hump actually makes them slow down. A speed camera is not going to make them slow down, it's just going to give them a fine after they were speeding already.
Through the deputy mayor, could we refer this to the traffic manager? Who could address it perhaps and give us some feedback on the discussion?
This, yeah, I was going to say, this is the minutes of the traffic committee that we're going through, I think we're moving into different. I think that we're moving into a different motion at the moment.
Well, the motion that is on the board investigates the possibility of owning mobile speed cameras and bringing a report to the April council meeting.
So let's do that.
Well, we could ask the opportunity or find out what's the rules governing.
And I'm guessing that the report that comes to the April council meeting will cover that?
Okay, so you don't want the traffic manager to address the council.
One last question. Is owning, investigates the possibility of owning mobile speed cameras, is that just to create a revenue or to stop the speeding? It's not going to stop the speeding.
Well, look, mobile speed cameras, you put them and then you move them from one place to the other. People don't know there's a speed camera there, so why would they slow down if they're speeding?
Look, quite honestly, speeding, speed cameras, it's only installed by state government. I don't believe council can install a speed cameras. This is one. Secondly, what council can do, just to put a speed detector and monitor it and give the report to the state government and see, well, look, this is hot spot, look how many abused, you know, speeding in this street and do something about it, this is all what you can do. But anyway, we have to wait for the report, just go for investigation and come back to us, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried, thank you, Mister Mayor. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is questions with notice on page three fifty, tab number twenty-three, in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, Liverpool has long suffered the stigma of being a city of drug related issues. And this is not the first time that this issue has been raised at this council.
Point of order.
Mister Mayor, what's your point of order?
No motion, has been moved.
Sorry, would you like to move a motion based on the answer to your questions councillor Rhodes?
Can you turn on your microphone councillor? Can you turn on your microphone please?
Okay, to the councillor opposite me, I'm leading up to the, a possible motion. This was a question that I put to the council because the question was Liverpool has long suffered, Cabramatta once did suffer in much the same way, they cleaned up their act, I should say, other local LGAs had a similar problem, they cleaned up their act.
So would you, would you like to move the motion now?
Well, I propose possibly moving this motion, that council include as a priority action by council to clean up the Liverpool CBD of its illegal drug related issues and direct the CEO to provide a report back to the March council meeting based on how the neighbouring councils addressed the drug issues that once plagued areas such as Cabramatta and how it was reportedly cleaned up. They've got it, they've got it.
Do you have a second for your motion? There's no second for the motion, the motion won't be discussed, so it's not, I'll call for a second or again.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mayor Manoon, okay, we can, would you like to, can I ask, can I, can I ask some advice around whether there is a legal motion before us please?
Council is not law enforcement. Sorry.
Thank you. I'll refer to the acting general counsel. Look, I may need to take it on notice, there are aspects of it that, action by council to clean up the Liverpool CBD of its illegal drug related issues, these are clearly police operational matters, that would concern me, as opposed to just our rangers. Direct the CEO to provide a report back into the March meeting based on how neighbouring councils addressed drug issues that once plagued their areas. That's something I've got to look at carefully, but general counsel, are you able from the top of you?
Hello? Oh, sorry. Thank you, CEO. I don't think there's any problem with the second part of the resolution, but as you've mentioned, the, the first part, it's, it's not necessarily the responsibility of council to engage in some, some aspects of this, such as the policing and the health aspects.
Happy to remove the first item in that motion, so it just starts direct the CEO to provide a report back.
Mister CEO, do you have any comment on how we can get the desired outcome of the motion? And councillor Green, I'll get to you after that.
Sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, can I argue with this new, newly created SAM position, you know, security announcement manager, that that level of expertise might assist the CEO in preparation of what councillor Rhodes is asking for?
Can I just think, Mister Mayor, I do have concerns with comments such as that once plagued areas such as Cabramatta. I don't know how this council can make an affirmative comment about another council area in relation to a drug problem, no trouble, et cetera. If what I'm being asked is to check with my colleagues, our neighbouring councils, as to how they have dealt with any drug issues and problems associated with drug issues in the past, full stop, I would have absolutely no problem with that.
Can you put your microphone on please?
Just make it direct the CEO to provide a report back to the March council meeting based on how neighbouring councils addressed similar situations.
Councillor Green?
Thank you. What we're dealing with here, what we're trying to discuss is a complex social and health issue. It's beyond councils' remit in, in terms of cleaning up. This is something that is cross portfolio work, it's also cross agency work, it requires a collaborative approach. And if you were going to bring together, I know that, that some type, that these, some of these issues come up at the, the safety committee, but if you were really looking to address the issues, then why would we not want to bring to the table all the stakeholders that are involved in terms of health, DCJ, police, drug and alcohol workers, the agencies that are working in the drug and alcohol space? Let's look at it from a holistic point of view in terms of what services are available, what are the gaps in services that are available to families and people that are affected by alcohol and drug misuse, in terms of even a rehabilitation centre. Do you know what I mean? It, it requires a whole, a holistic approach that, you know, that, you know, that, yeah, it's, it's a complex social issue and it's just not law and order, it's not just health, it's, it's.
Thank you councillor. I couldn't agree more and if I could just pass on to the CEO for comment, thank you.
For all the matters you raised councillor, it's why I was very uncomfortable, point number one. Now that point number one has gone, all I'm being asked to do, and I don't see an issue with it, is to check with my colleagues in neighbouring councils, how are you dealing with it? In doing so, I will also express to him all the actions we've been taking. Swap IDs if I can use that expression, then I will come back. And then the reality is going to be, is going to be a much larger intense discussion, looking at, and obviously many, many stakeholders.
Thank you. And if I can ask that, in that, in those discussions, that we can identify all of those partners that came together in that, in that round table scenario? And I also, can I suggest that, oh, that's been removed, bringing back, well, bringing back to the March council meeting, are we, are we pushing that?
Yeah, I would have thought April would have made it a bit.
Happy to change it.
April? Councillor Hadid?
Yeah, thank you deputy mayor. Well, I'm not here to defend Liverpool police, but I have to be honest with you. I can see Liverpool police every day in the morning, the surrounding street, they're doing a great job, stopping suspicious people, search their bag, their pocket and everything. You can see it every day. And I don't believe we can do anything about it just to increase the presence of Liverpool police or the police, you know, patrolling the whole mall. But if, if you go and look if someone, you know, he's a junkie or he takes drugs or whatever, unless he has some drugs, you can't do anything for him. You can't kick him out of the mall, you can't do anything for him. You know what I mean? So the police is doing their job, all what you can ask, you ask it for a report, come back to us. Like, well, I know what we have to do, increase the police presence in the mall and the surrounding street. So all we can do is just send a request to the police, you know, we see in Liverpool or Green Valley area, just to increase the presence.
Can I, I know that we are doing, we are, we are doing some work to, to try to combat this and we need to do more work. Can I maybe ask through you, Mister CEO, to the director of operations about any, any comment you can add?
Turn, turn green, there you go. I think through the CEO, my advice is that the resolution is just slightly changed to see how neighbouring councils contributed to addressing. I was actually intimately involved in Cabramatta in its heyday and it was not a council solution. It was certainly a state government and police solution and a, and a health solution in relation to the heroin problem in Cabramatta. Some of the things that we can already forecast are the, the movements in and around Warren Service Way Car Park, which you'll see some movement on as of the week after next, the, the aggregation of our CCTV cameras into a centralised operational response room at Moore Street very shortly this year. And also the, today's announcement in relation to the security and asset manager. I think those things contribute to assisting the police in managing what is a, as councillor as councillor Green quite rightly put, a social and health problem, notwithstanding the fact that we have a methadone clinic, we have in, in the middle of the CBD, we have a, a police force that is, is stretched and under-resourced and to the extent to which the councillor mentioned in relation to Move On Bowers are constrained. And a distinct issue that we've noticed this year and has been mentioned in the crime interactions is the under-reporting of incidents. If we look at Big Park and if we look at the mall and we look at Warren Service Way car parks, they are not on the BOSS卡, the Bureau of Crime Statistics radar, because nobody reports them. We complain a lot about them, but nobody reports them. So there's a number of strategies, I think. But I think if that was about how councils contribute to addressing rather than addressed, I think that clarifies it.
So if we change the word council based on how councils, remove the word addressed and put in lieu thereof the word contributed to, contributed to addressing similar situations. Well, we, we, we're not mentioning any- Councillor, we're not mentioning, councillor, we're not, we're deliberately not mentioning any council areas. I'm just saying the wording says my neighbouring councils could be-
Through the- I think it's clear there's a desire to, to help, to make everybody's life better, people who are, people who are challenged in our society. And I think that we all know that we want to do that. I think that the best way to do that is to get all the experience that we can and to learn from that. And so I'm hoping that we are capturing that in this motion and it's not a council responsibility as such, but we are a partner in this community and we need to get on, you know, we need to take experience from what's happened before elsewhere and to use that and to, to move with it. Councillor Moon?
Just through the CEO, I was wondering if we can add to that, if we can write to the state government and the two state members or the three state members that are locally within our LGA, asking them about the, the meth clinic that's here in Liverpool. Can we, can we have that, a solution to that? Because I believe that's a big contributor to the issue that we've got within the LGA. Like, you walk down Scott Street, the other end of Scott Street, and you see people coming out of the clinic really in bad shape.
Councillor, I strongly recommend to council that we don't do that. Can I strongly recommend you're asking me to go and meet with my neighbouring colleagues, to ask them, what did you do to assist? How did you do to assist it? Look at this from a whole holistic point of view, talk to my directors and come back. If you start limiting me to start writing to state members of parliament about a specific matter, then the whole thing will get bogged down in relation to that. It will no longer become an issue about how, but it will become an issue about whether a methadone clinic should be or not, whether other matters should occur. I really think that would be a big mistake.
I second that.
To address my motion, I have a right.
A right of reply?
Thank you.
And then we, one amendment?
Because I was very patient to give you all your opportunity to talk upon the motion.
Instead of, instead of speaking to neighbouring councils, why don't we speak to law enforcement and see what's going on in our area?
That's not, that's not, the spirit of the motion is to, to bring everything together from experience of other people. If I can let councillor Rhodes have your right of reply.
We don't even know the statistics of the area.
This is not a new matter. It might be new to a few councillors here, but we've dealt with this, I don't know, probably 50 times at council and we have addressed it before and we have addressed it holistically. And we try to gather all the people together that can make a difference to everybody's lives and stop the situations that we have in Liverpool. Tonight, or today, you heard of the gentleman from the Mendane Society and he's telling us about when he took over that site, it was full of needles and all of this type of stuff that is related to, to drugs. So to sit here and deny or to say, well, do we have a problem? You know, you, you can't be listening to the constituents if, if, if you aren't thinking, well, you know, should we do this? I mean, who says that, you know, that we've got a problem? And who says that somebody else hasn't got a problem? This is asking council to simply go and find out how a neighbouring LGA fixed up a similar situation because they did. And if you haven't lived in the area long enough, you know, everybody knows that they did. So the word is that they left Cabramatta and came to Liverpool. But we don't know that as a fact. We don't know that as a fact. Let's get the information and from all the agencies involved, you will find that-
I think we've captured, I think we've captured, that's out of order.
So thank you very much. And I'm speaking point of order. Okay? I am the person who speaks last on this motion. Thank you. So I put this motion to the council. Let's investigate. Let's see if we can clean up council, clean up the, the Liverpool CBD and make Liverpool a more livable place for our constituents. These are the people who are complaining. So let's see what we can do. Thank you.
If I could put the motion, please, all those in favour? Against? I declare it carried. Moving on, notice of motion, 01 on page 352, tab 24. Just one second. You have a presentation first?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Rhodes, thank you.
This is about koalas in Liverpool and I present this, this report in support of the urgent continuing need for koalas conversation, conservation in South West Sydney and outline the updated koala observations in Liverpool and some of the identified strategies need, needed in our LGA to contribute to this crucial effort. Koalas, our iconic Australian marsupials, are facing a multitude of threats to their survival, including habitat loss, change of climate, disease and bushfires. Liverpool is home to sufficient koala, is home to significant koala populations and their numbers are increasing, mainly due to the habitats south of Liverpool that are increasingly fragmented and degraded due to urbanisation. I was recently informed that many of the reported sightings from wildlife organisations were not uploaded onto the official database, which would have shown or even reported an even greater increase in the Liverpool koala populations. From the attached, and I hope it is attached or can be provided to council in the minutes, the koalas in the Sydney Basin brochure, you can see how an important role of the defence lands plays in this provision of the koala habitat in Liverpool. It also explains the increasing sightings in the areas of Wattle Grove, Moorbank, Holsworthy, Casula and explains why Dead Man's Creek is now recognised as the most dangerous kill zone for koalas along Heathcote Road as they attempt to cross into the points, Pleasure Point and Sandy Point. A recent onsite meeting at the, with Catherine Reynolds and John Salivas from the Sutherlandshire Environment Centre, the honourable member for Holsworthy, Miss Tina Ayar, and Charles Waite, Liverpool Council Traffic Manager, Stuart Vales from the Sandy Point Residents Association and myself, observed the urgent need to install a wildlife fence along Heathcote Road, improve the underpass that will entice wildlife to cross the Heathcote Road in safety and the need for traffic mitigation measures such as decreasing speed limits and installing electronic koala warning signs. From October 2022 to October 2023, there were nine koalas killed at Dead Man's Creek. The significance of this increasing number when added to the Appen Road and other kill zones is frightening when it only takes 3% of the koala population to be killed for all efforts to conserve the koalas in South West Sydney to be in actual decline. In 2021, a report detailed measures to stop koalas crossing the Dead Man's Creek kill zone. However, two years later, the main recommendation, including the wildlife fence, have not been enacted upon. Action is needed now. We can't delay the erection of the wildlife fence through the next breeding season. It must stop the roadkill and improve the sustainability of the koala population. Liverpool is an ideal location to plant koala feeder trees in suitable areas throughout the Liverpool LGA. There is increasing concern about the availability of koala feeder trees in South West Sydney with koala sanctions and zoos finding it harder and harder to source koala feed for their animals. What they are doing is harvesting their needs from the ever-decreasing number of trees available in the natural habitat. The decrease in feeder trees in the natural habitat is under pressure not only from the habitat destruction through the urbanisation and bushfires, but also from the growing demand for food for captive koalas. This emerging new threat to sustainable wild koala habitat should be addressed through possible Liverpool council collaborating with the Western Sydney Parklands, the Department of Education, to encourage the opportunity to plant koala trees in our open space corridors and parks. If we are to save our koala populations, it is essential that the Liverpool council continues to work in collaboration with our neighbouring LGAs, Transport for New South Wales, the Sydney Parklands Authority, the Defence and also in collaboration with Sutherlandshire Environment Centre, Wires, Sandy Point Residents Association, as well as concerned Liverpool constituents and property owners. Koalas are not only the beloved symbol of Australia, but are also a keystone species whose survival is crucial to maintaining healthy ecosystems. By taking protective measures to conserve koalas in South West Sydney, Liverpool can demonstrate its commitment to environmental stewardship and leaving a lasting legacy for future generations. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, is it, is it a presentation or is it a speech?
I don't know, I don't clinically know the difference between both, but that's a presentation from councillor to other councillors. So thank you. No, no, no. It would probably be nice if we had an email copy of it so that we could ask anything.
There was nothing actually presented to us for it to be a presentation.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I guess, I guess in future, i- i- if the code of meeting practice allows, it would be nice to have that beforehand just so that we could ask questions and things if we need to. But thank you very much for another koala. I know your passion. I understand your passion for koalas and it educates all of us when you, when you present. If we could move on to notices of motion, nom 01 on page 352, tab 24, with a recommendation on page 352. Do I have someone to move the motion in the name of councillor Rhodes?
I'll, I'll second councillor Rhodes' motion.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against? I declare it carried. Sorry, we're now moving into confidential items.
Give them a whole, in a whole, except for the legal report?
We can, absolutely. Do I have a second for that?
Yeah.
Councillor Hall, seconded. You can do the next one. Okay, so I would like to move that we move comp 01, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7 and 8.
Yep.
Are we?
There's a slight amendment with point number five, with, I think, item five.
Let's pull out item five and item four then and we'll just do 1, 2, 3, 6, 7 and 8, moving them all as a whole. Councillor Haddad, seconded. Councillor Amun, all those in favour? Against? I declare it carried. We will now deal with, so that the mayor doesn't have to leave just yet. We will deal with comp 05. Is there a slight amendment to the recommendation? I think that's on the desk. I think it was printed out on the desk. Thank you. Do I have anyone to move that recommendation? Councillor Hall, seconded. Councillor Amun, all those in favour? Against? I declare it carried. Thank you. Mr Mayor will now do comp 04. Thank you very much. So comp 04, the legal affairs report on page 1828, tab 4, with a recommendation on 1828, moved councillor Hall, seconded councillor Green, all those in favour? Against?
This is the legal affair-
Correct?
I have a question.
Okay, yes, councillor Rhodes?
Page 1840, the land claim, 17,000 square kilometres at Pleasure Point. If they're successful in that claim, do they play, pay rates?
Through the CEO? 1840, councillor Rhodes, was it?
It's page 1840, land claim, 17, uh, okay, let me get it for you. Let me find it. It's in these, the page is 1840.
Yeah, but what case is that?
Which item number is that?
We will find it. 1840, yes, 73.
So the question is if that's successful, does the, do they pay land rates?
Do they pay council rates? No, it is. 7,362 page, that's what it is. I don't know.
We need to, through the CEO, we need to take that on notice?
Please.
I think we need to get someone to look at the dust miter in this place. I think to take that on notice.
You can take that on notice and bring it back. Thank you very much. All right, so all those in favour? All those in favour of, of the recommendation that we, we receive and note the report? Yes, already done. I just want to vote yes. All right, I declare that carried. And that being the case at 17 minutes past six, I declare the meeting closed.